Ms. Barbeham, please call the rule.
Mr. Alexander.
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson.
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson. Ms. Grant.
Aye.
Mr. Belter.
Aye.
Ms. Barbeham.
Aye.
Motion carried. We're in regular meeting at seven five PM. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Barbeham, please read the vision statement.
Through expectations of excellence and by providing equitable educational opportunities to empower each student, our graduates are prepared for college careers and to serve as contributing members of a dynamic global society.
At this time, the Board of Education opens the floor for public comment. The board will receive public comment from any individuals present this evening who have submitted a request to address the board for the established procedures. Comments will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy two, two thirty. Ms. Barbeham? First time on the stage, Ms. Patterson. I'm sorry? Yes? Next, we have, uh, Therese Craig.
Hello. I'm Ms. Rice Gray. I work at the Vice East High School. I've been there eighteen years. And we need help in maintenance, very bad. We need help. We're short. They don't give us... We don't want to work overtime because we get off at four o'clock in the morning. People get off at four o'clock in the morning. A lot happening at four o'clock in the morning. People get off at four o'clock in the morning. We need help. People are filling out applications, you guys. Somebody's not pulling the application. We need a lot of help. And then we had a problem with the vans. Someone told us that we needed CDLs to drive the vans. It's not true. We didn't need a CDL to drive the vans. They didn't do that right. They just took jobs from us that didn't get us email... We didn't get an email about it. We never got an email about the vans. We just got told that we're not driving no more. And we found out we didn't need CDLs. We just needed like a little permit. They be telling people that we need CDLs. We did not need CDLs. And they didn't do that the right way. So we need... When I say maintenance department need help, we need help bad. We can't keep a school clean with six people in the building sometimes. Sometimes we have three people on the weekend and truck on Fridays when people call off us up. We need help real bad. So please, we need help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Marshawn Clemmons.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Marshawn Clemmons, and I'm a senior at Proviso West High School. I've come today to talk to the board about the issue of allowing seniors who have completed all their graduation requirements before June and early release from some of their classes. I've gone to as many teachers and counselors for help on the matter with no resolution, so I've come to plead my case here in front of you all. At Proviso West, I have kept a positive attitude and attendance through the adversity of the school. So far, I have twenty-three and a half credits, and I'm currently finishing my last year of English, which is my last graduation. And I don't see why I must spend the rest, the entire eight periods in school, when only one class is required on my schedule. I believe instead I could use some of the time, some of that time for more hours at work, saving for college, purchasing a car, and my future. I understand that the work program is a possible solution. However, when I requested to be placed in that class, it was full. And I have talked to many other students who are now in the same position. I think it would be beneficial to begin the next phase and begin preparing for my future. I have spoken to administrators and teachers that have confirmed that there was an early release policy in school. However, it has not been enacted this year. I am here on behalf of my fellow seniors to request that this policy be reinstated. And we be allowed to leave early from school at a time dependent on our credit requirements. I acknowledge that all of you have the best interest for all students and would urge you to consider this. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is a policy. And senior privileges have been in existence in Proviso Township High School forever. All three of my kids went through. And I do understand, and I had some seniors give me a call, that are actually sitting in class and they only need to do one class. And so, when you've talked about senior privileges, you're not getting a response?
You know, I've garnered all of them. They've all told me that the real problem ish... The real issue is that the... You guys, the board hasn't enacted this early release policy. They said that they can't change my schedule because you guys have to give them the okay, the thumbs up.
The board told... Somebody told you the board...
I've talked to...
But we have a policy, so it's there.
They said that the policy hasn't been, you know, they said that you guys haven't given them the thumbs up. They said that they've been trying to talk to you guys about the issue. They've told me that, you know, that's what they've told me of this. I've talked to all the counselors, all the teachers in the work, you know, in the work program. They said that their class is full. I've tried to talk to my counselors about the early release, and they've said that you guys haven't given them the thumbs up for... They said that they've talked to you guys about the issue.
Thank you. I'm so proud of you for standing up.
Nate Daniel Owen.
Good evening, everyone. Let's talk about what brings us here tonight. Tonight, I have to talk about maintenance in all three buildings. I represent all three buildings because they trust me. We were on the chopping block with the teachers with the last train wreck. Check the archive. I'm here because we do need help. They freeze jobs for three and a half years. They lowered the pay. They changed the job duties. We also came to talk about the vans. Like Ms. Craig said, we all were driving. It's six of us. Night school kids. Our kids know us. We were told, no, two of us were told in an email. Check your email. That you will no longer be driving. I received the email on the nineteenth. I told... I called the other guys. So then I sent out an email asking, why wasn't everyone informed? Not the drivers, not Dr. T. Thank you, Dr. T. Not the parents of the night school kids. Nor was there a meeting with us. Nor did our parents or student receive an email or letter. So I told my kids, I drive, please let your parents know that I will no longer be driving. Yes, I have my CDL permit, but that's not what it's about. We signed up to drive. Our licenses are already on fire. So as you know, why we bought these vans, let's talk about it. The district did not, I won't say the district, it was told that they didn't pay first students. So therefore, last year, they came to us and asked us to drive, pick the kids up in the transit in the morning and at night. Heard Mr. Garrett, he asked all of us. A lot of us didn't sign up. A lot of us did. No one has a passage permit at this district. No one. No one. I asked my drivers to get involved, take the class, and so all of them do now. Everything was done, it was done through me. Everything else was not done right. We were told it was a board member that kept asking. Everyone can drive. Anyone can take these transits without anyone. Coaches, security, clubs, teachers. This is no attack. We're asking that all things be fair in the district. We, the drivers, were told. It's just tired. Our supervisor, our leads, we're tired. We didn't tell them we're tired. Not one of the maintenance and custodial people told them we were tired. What we're tired of is getting threatened and bullied. This district has to stand up for us. These guys are doing two to three jobs with no stipend. They're told they better do it or they're going to get a temp service to come in here. This is used often. We have, we have one bad apple, and as long as you're a snake, you can sit and get... You get a promotion, you get a raise. I want to apologize to my team for that. We will be filing a complaint going forward. I, I don't appreciate that. These men and women should be tired. Let's talk about that. Receiving clerk, let's talk about him. He removes store at three thirty in the morning. He picks up the groceries for the classes. He pick us the mail, the check, remove furniture, pick that furniture. Let's talk about the head groundsman who's been outside for two years by himself. You guys just approved someone for him last month. Let's talk about being tired. No one told you these guys are tired, but I want you to count how many...
Thank you.
And I was in a car accident on the job duty getting my night school kids safely home and back to the building. Twice, not one person in this district on this boy checked on me. I fell on black ice. Again, no kids was in there with me. I got them home safely, and I got hurt. Thanks a lot for showing me in my district and my maintenance that they care that much about us. I'm asking for you guys, we may not like each other, but we all need to get along for the kids, the teachers, and the maintenance department. Invite me in. I know I've been through here with this district. Invite me in. I don't have no reason to lie about anything. It took me ten years to get my money. Thank you to the ones who helped, but we need help. These guys are scared to come here tonight because they're threatened, and I want you to know that bullied, I will be advocating for anyone in this district. I'm tired of supervisors, principal, and anybody else thinking they can bully us. I have to bring this to the table. This goes on too much, and it's been going on with the last three superintendents. Let's start here with you guys. Let's be a team. It takes a team. Thank you.
Pearl Ferstein.
Greetings to the board. I guess you've been in the right arena. I didn't come here, but I came here with positive vibes about Proviso West. My name is Carl Forsythe. I'm a twenty-six-year veteran, retired prior Friday. And I've been coaching wrestling for over thirty years. Where I am at Proviso West right now, and it's truly a mission from God. I'm gonna do it till I, till I die. So I see the state of emergency that we have in our world with the mental health issues, and the kids are really struggling right now. So I'm concentrating my efforts with wrestling, and I'd just like to say, shed some light on one of the individuals we have right now who's a freshman at Proviso West. His name is Jameer Castleberry. If you check the animals at Proviso West Sport, he's making history right now. He's a freshman, won a regional state championship. He's a champion of the regional, the sectional, and now he's going to compete over the weekend at Champagne or Banner for the covenant title. Okay? And I can only say that wrestling helped save my life. I travel all over. I'm a five-time European champion. I was Olympic copper in the eighties. I have world champions right now, Pan Am champions, and he's one of the champions, and there's many more at Proviso West. So I've, I've been in the building. I see what's going on. I'm not complaining about it. I want to do something about it. So I'm here to tell you that I'm grateful for the A.D. Department recognizing this kid today. They gave him a sit-down, a parade that was unprecedented. The band was fabulous, and I just want to show appreciation and gratitude to the athletic directors department and all the board members that help out here. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. At this time, we will have student recognition. Board members, if we can have you come to the front, please.
All right. Good evening, President Grant, Board of Education, and stakeholders joining us this evening. First, on behalf of the Board of Education and District 209 this evening, I'm honored to recognize and celebrate the outstanding achievements. And from one of our students, Mariah Mel. We're here to acknowledge her remarkable success in being awarded the prestigious President Scholarship. The road to securing this scholarship was not without its challenges, but Mariah faced them head-on, fortified by a strong support system. In her pursuit of this scholarship, Mariah tackled the application process with an essay that eloquently articulated why she deserved this honor. And with great pleasure, we announced that we celebrate the scholarship in the amount of thirty thousand dollars per year. Mariah's dedication toward education is further demonstrated by her early graduation from high school, a testament to her academic prowess. Now a full-time student at Loyola, she has embarked on a new chapter of her life as a criminal justice major. While she has yet decided her specific field, Mariah's aspiration leaned towards becoming a lawyer. An admirable and undoubtedly aligns with Loyola's commitment to producing thoughtful ethical leaders. Mariah extends her heartfelt gratitude to those who have played pivotal roles in her journey. Firstly, she acknowledges her family, whose unwavering support has been instrumental in shaping her decisions. A special mention goes out to her mother, whose footsteps she follows at Loyola University. Mom, you can stand up too, I think. Mariah also expresses her appreciation for Mr. Hull, who consistently guided her through, throughout her high school years. He's not here tonight because of an award ceremony. She acknowledges Dr. Brandon and Dr. Hervalis as mentors who have played significant roles in her academic and personal growth. Congratulations, Mariah Mel. Your success is a testament to the power of perseverance and the transformative impact of education. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mariah? Come on back.
Yeah, we'll take a picture of her.
We're gonna grab you. All right, I like that one. One, two, three. Do you want...
You want...
Can we get Mom and Jan up here? Are we yelling?
Yep, everyone's saying.
Good. All right.
Now at this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Alexander Brandon, our Director of CTE, Early College Licensing and Dual Enrollment Dual Credit Dual Group Degrees, to come to the podium to announce our next group of honorees.
Good evening, esteemed board. It's great to be with you all this evening and to be able to celebrate some of our students and their achievements. So as you know, with your all's support, we were able to start a CTE and early college program at Chrtton. And we have an inaugural group of ten students that we'd like to recognize this evening. Out of these ten students, four of them were criminal justice students, four of them were CNA students, and then we had two students go out there on their own because they've run into the same issue of getting to their senior year and needing additional credits. So we are continuing to build that platform. I'm happy to present next month to give you all an update on that. With that said, I'm gonna call names. I do see some familiar faces. We'll make sure that you're recognized. Been a special group. This is year four for me. So for the East students in particular, I've been with these young men and women since their freshman year. And so I'm proud of where they came from to where they're at today. Very focused on being a scholar. It's so impressive to see where they started at age of fourteen and fifteen to being young adults. And even applying to graduate early and being off at Loyola. So without any further ado, let's have the students come up one by, one at a time, and please stand with the board. Alya Frazier. Taylor Clash. Malika Coleman. Peace Thompson. Princess, as I call her, Mariah Mel. Joyce Brown. Natalie Armstrong. Allison Gomez. Zion Eldy. And Nasser Stiles. And I'll have your certificates for you momentarily. So fortunately or unfortunately, out of three students that showed up, they're all from Proviso East where I started. With that said, let me, let me give you just a quick breakdown, and I'll try to be brief. Zion and I started when he was about five inches shorter. And I had to chase him around the hallways a little bit. But we always had valuable conversations. We built a wonderful rapport. And he's got a great support system, and his grandparents at home, I know them very well. I can't say enough about the young men that you've become and how proud I am of you. I told you, you reminded me of him for a reason. He pursued me to be able to go over to Chrtton to take psychology to further his education. And I said, I'm more than happy to get you there any way that we can. And so, you know, without a doubt, bright future's on your jacket for a reason. Okay? Mariah, Princess Mel. She has always been a fan favorite at Proviso East of everybody. The teachers, our support staff, everybody knows Mariah. Positive attitude, great disposition, always participated in extracurricular, co-curricular activities. I can't say enough about her positive influence on the young people around her. You know, going down the line of being a lawyer is probably right up your alley, and I want to encourage you to continue to chase your dreams. She is an example of a board policy that we do have in place where you can apply for early graduation. So she was part of our criminal justice program. This is our inaugural ten, and we want that to continue to grow each semester. And this is living proof of what happens when you have perseverance, you work hard, you graduate early, you get a thirty thousand dollar scholarship, and she's sitting at Loyola as we speak. Proud of her. Peace. Peace is family to everybody. Have a great relationship with her parents as well. Her mother is in her corner no matter what. Peace does also, she wants not only to be a lawyer, but wants to be a judge. And we are trying to connect her with as many important people as we can. Everybody's important. But we were trying to get her in front of lawyers and judges as well because she's still here with us for the rest of the semester. She'll graduate on time, went through the program with flying colors. And when I tell you about character of these three, two young ladies and the young man in front of you, including everybody else on this list of our inaugural ten, I couldn't be more proud. We have a combined, out of ten students, GPA of a three point oh. We have fifty-seven credits obtained in one semester from the college press. Fifty-seven, which is amazing. And we're gonna keep growing the program. We do have a youth leadership summit coming up that these three participated in last year. Rough numbers off the top of my head, East is gonna send fifty-two. PMSA is coming in a second. We're sending like forty-three students, and I want to say Proviso West is like thirty-five. We will have the largest representation of every high school in our EFE region at Chrtton. I'll make sure that the board knows, so if you're off that day or if you have time to come in, they're there from eight until three. Serge is the group that sponsors it. Dean Willis has been awesome. She's a friend of Tiffany Jenkins, a former employee here. And she rolls out the red carpet for our students because all the other schools don't get to bring twenty kids at peace. And so, with that said, you all have forged relationships for us, and it's for us to keep flinging that fire. All I can tell you is that I believe in each and every one of you, even the seven that aren't here tonight, and I want you to continue to reach out to me, to your support group behind us, to your families, to our board members, to our superintendents, to the principals, because we are always going to support you. That's all I have for this evening. I couldn't be more proud. If you have any pictures, if Brandon brought for the board, and we so sorry, and then if their families want to come up for a quick one.
Dr. Brandon, you should be in this too.
You gotta get out.
You gotta... All right, here, scooch in, scooch in. I want to be like this. All right, right this way. One, two, three.
Any parent or guardian that wants to come on up, please do.
Here, let's let her, let her through.
Hold on one second.
Yeah, wait, wait, wait.
Hold on, one, Jan.
All right, great job.
All right. As they proceed to the seats, we do have... As they proceed to the seats, we do have another set of recognitions, one more. And, you know, it's an important one, because I think the staff that work in our schools day in, day out, and what they give to our students every single day is incredibly important, and they're tireless in their efforts. I'm gonna ask Mr. Ashoff. I'm gonna ask Mr. Ashoff to come on up and give a little quick presentation on some of the teachers that'll be recognized here tonight.
Good evening, board. My name is Alex Ashoff, District Coordinator for Data and Assessment here at Proviso. Later on tonight, during the superintendent report, you're going to hear an update about our Renaissance STAR efforts, which is one of our assessment tools to assess students' knowledge in reading and math. We wanted to recognize some of our outstanding teachers that had the most growth in the areas of reading and math. We also want to recognize the fact that this is a collective effort. This is not just the English teacher's responsibility to support our students in reading. It's not just the math teacher's responsibility to support the students in math. So we're also recognizing a non-English teacher that had the most growth in reading, and also a non-math teacher that had the most growth in math, because again, we believe it is a collective effort, it is everyone's responsibility. Start with Proviso East. Unfortunately, Mr. Holt could not be here tonight. It is senior night here, so he is with his students tonight. So on his behalf, I'm gonna call up some teachers' names here. First, we have Mr. Brian Fisher. Mr. Brian Fisher is being recognized. As the teacher at Proviso East, the English teacher that had the highest growth in English. Next, the teacher outside of the English department that had the highest growth in reading was Ms. Martina McCallister, one of our social studies teachers. And next, in the area of the math department, we have Mr. Miguel Lopez. He had the highest overall growth in math, Miguel Lopez. And then the last teacher from Proviso East that could not be with us tonight, she, that is Ms. Isabel Castellanos Guerba. She is a science teacher at Proviso East that had the overall highest growth in math. Alright, and next I would like to invite Ms. Martinez up to present the awards to some of our Proviso West staff.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here, and it's so exciting to recognize academic growth. So we are fortunate to have Ms. Cynthia Moraine. If she could please come up. She is newly to our school, comes with a great deal of experience, and we're really happy to have her, and she's contributed many, many ways in the school. So thanks for being a leader right away. Appreciate it. And we had a few other teachers that were recognized for their growth in STAR, which we're very, very pleased with. We have Angela Gold. She is not here right now, but she is maybe watching. So Ms. Gold, thank you for everything that you do. And we also have Mr. Yeltsin. He's one of our science teachers. Congratulations to you, Mr. Yeltsin. And our fourth teacher to be recognized is Ms. Aubook. She is unable to be here today, but we want to thank her too. She is one of our awesome math teachers.
And then next, we'd like to invite Ms. Kristen Chigano, Principal of Proviso Math and Science Academy, to recognize some of her teachers.
We'll start with in-person attendees. So the first instructor is a teacher outside the math department. This teacher had the most growth from fall to winter STAR in the math content area, Dr. John Bordasani, science teacher but growth in math. A lot of math and forensic science.
There we go.
Crime scenes. Okay. These teachers were unable to attend tonight. So the next teacher, this is an English teacher, most growth in the English department is to, awarded to Ms. Courtney Berishai. Next teacher, most growth in reading but to a non-English teacher, this is actually a science teacher, Ms. Sarah Hules. Again, this is from reading, a science teacher, so I'm familiar. And then, this is a math teacher, most growth in the math content area, Mr. Kurt Wolfkleiner.
And then I'd just like, if you were in attendance today, if you could come up and stand with our board here, Ms. Brandon Burke will get a picture. If you were able to be in attendance, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, board. And that concludes the recognition for students' staff this evening.
Thank you.
At this time, we are going to go ahead and have our superintendent's report. Mr. Braysh, you're standing in tonight. Thank you so much. If you could leave the proceedings.
Yes, thank you so much. Once again, board, we have several presentations for you this evening. First, I'd like to ask Dr. Deborah Watson-Hill to come to the podium for our financial update.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, for your review this evening, you have been presented with the treasurer's report. Are there any questions? Next up? Next up, we have the bill lists. Are there any questions?
I have a question about Amida Glenn, I think it's Amida Glenn Oates.
Amida Glenn Oates, yes.
Forty-four thousand dollars.
That is correct.
Who's checking to make sure that our students are striving, that attend this place?
So as, that's a great question. So as the CSBO, that would be my area of responsibility, but I do know that our Special Education Coordinator does keep in contact with all our out-of-district placements in reference to their academic success.
And it took them two years to realize that the district owed them forty-four thousand dollars?
So I just received that invoice probably about a couple weeks ago, and I did post a question as well. As you recall, at the beginning of the year, we had many out-of-district placements that require us to pay prior expenses. So it's my understanding that that was one that was lost in the shuffle, but as soon as the business office received it, I, I paid it. And that's why I'm gonna do this today.
My other concern with the bills and payroll, I went back this last week, last two weeks.
Okay.
Because some of these names I've heard before. We've paid them.
Okay.
My concern is that we are overpaying. Who's checking on that? Because I actually seen two that I know we overpaid. We paid them before now, and we've now paid them again. Who's checking to make sure that we're not overpaying? Because I think what has happened is everybody is hearing, "Oh, they're paying, they're paying."
Right, right.
And you're getting bills two years old, you just had it yesterday. Come on.
Right, right.
And if we are overpaying, how are we getting that money back into the district? What are we doing to get the money back? So if I paid someone thirty thousand dollars over, because you paid it two years ago, but then somebody sent a bill and said, "Oh, you owe me," how am I, how are you guys going about getting that money back to the district?
So can I start with the very first one?
Sure.
In reference to understanding where the bills are coming from and how they're being paid, and making ensuring that we're not overpaying. Our vendors, I do meet with the team every Monday, and they know before we process any invoice, we have to do our due diligence, the check last year in addition to this year. So what the accounts payable team is doing now is going into invoice processing, and so we have to match up those invoices. If those invoices appear more than once, they know they are not to pay it. We can only pay that one invoice one time. And so you are right, there were some that were probably double paid, overpaid, a few that I've seen. And what has happened is that we reached out to the vendor, many of them probably are out-of-district placement, and what they did is they offered us a credit off whatever the balance to be for this fiscal year. But since I've been in this position, I've only come across two where that hasn't occurred.
I noticed the credit card, the master card, it was forty-five thousand dollars, and I knew that was a real hot item.
Yes.
Hot topic, and now it's not. What are you doing to control that?
That's another great question, Board Member Patterson. So before any district employee utilizes the district credit card, we do have a form in place now that's called the Credit Card Authorization Form. If you take a look at the credit card bill that I can forward to board members, the month of December was the holiday tournament. So most of those charges on that credit card bill relates to that. So before anyone utilized the credit card, I personally have to go in, review what the purchase is for, see how it does apply to academics and to students. I sign off on it, and from there, they have authorization to utilize the credit card. So in reference to the big purchase, it was many purchases that went out for the holiday tournament, and the athletic director, Mr. Davis, did his due diligence during the month of November to get those approved. And so those are the charges that you see for the month of December.
I also noticed that the water bill, which was a real big issue. There was a month past due, I noticed it's a seven thousand dollar water bill payment that Stuart remembered being posted on Will, on social media, they gotta cut the water out. Well, this bill hasn't been paid, and I think it's dated for November. What happened?
Well, in reference to this bill, we did have December, when that bill probably, when that bill did come into the office, there was a lot of mail that we did not receive until January. And so what happened, when that happened, is that we ended up processing that payment.
My last question, I will continue to ask. We're spending a lot of money here. It was an issue before.
Yes.
We're gonna stick, keep at it.
Okay.
Please, we need to have a copy of the attorney's invoice, and they said that they actually sent you guys an invoice of what they are charging for. I noticed this month, we don't have the invoice. It's imperative that we have that.
Well, I'm glad you-
If we paid that, then we need to know what we're paying for.
You are absolutely correct, and I have it right here to send to you. That was an oversight on my behalf. January is a busy month preparing W2s, 1099s, et cetera, and so I realized that I had your information that the board requested in my drafts is sitting right here right now, and you should have it in about five minutes. Are there any other questions? Next is the-
Any other questions?
So the next one is the February pass-through bill list for Amida Glenn Oates, and we've already had the conversation regarding that. If there aren't any other questions, I will make sure I will send, press the send button to send you those attorney bills. Thank you. That's my presentation for today.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Hill. Next, we have a Renaissance STAR Assessment Performance Report by Mr. Alexander Ashoff.
Good evening again, board, President Grant. Vice President, oh, there we go. President Campa, Secretary Barman, and fellow board members. Here again to talk to you about Renaissance STAR. So to go a little bit more into detail about this assessment tool and inform our public, this is our universal screener. So what that means, this assessment is given in both areas of reading and math three times a year. The first one happens in the fall, that typically occurring at the start of the school year in September. The next window is the winter window, and that happened in December, and we just concluded in January. And the final one is the spring window that happens at the end of the school year. This is our assessment tool that we use to progress monitor, again, those areas in both English and in math. First I have for you is for our winter window, again, I just concluded right before semester one ended, is the percent of students assessed in each building for math and reading. Our goal at Proviso is always to assess at least ninety-five percent of our students. We did have Proviso Math and Science Academy reach that area, and working to make sure, again, we are assessing all of our students, again, nine through twelve at all of our campuses for each of our windows. What you may have seen in the Proviso positives was two graphs, and we're gonna kind of talk through those two graphs here for you today. When we're taking a look at a large, large amount of data, there's going to be several ways that we can kind of look at that. And what we're gonna talk about tonight is the area of growth, which is what we were celebrating for several of our teachers here today, and the area of proficiency or attainment. So in the area of growth, growth itself is taking a look at how students performed from two tests. So in this case, if we are looking most recently at the fall testing that they did in September compared to the winter testing. And one of the tools that STAR utilizes is something called the student growth percentile. So if we imagine our students, for instance, we can picture, I'm gonna say two students here. We have Phil. Phil is a twelfth grader. That twelfth grader, Phil, is possibly in AP or IB class, is a very high-performing student. We have another student, Cindy, she is a ninth grader, and is probably, does not have the same knowledge and attainment as that twelfth grader that we were mentioning, Phil. that we were mentioning, Phil. When we're looking at growth, when students take the assessment in the fall to get the Student Growth Percentile score, that student Cindy, when she tests in the fall, she gets a certain score. And then Cindy's score, there are numerous students across the nation that scored the same level. That would be called her academic peers in the same grade level. When Cindy takes the test again in the winter, she's gonna get another score. The Student Growth Percentile essentially takes a look at how Cindy did compared to all of her academic peers across the nation. And that score from the fall to the winter compared to all of the students across the nation. And then that's that percentile. That's what that percentile is when it's compared to all students across the nation in that growth. The great thing about SGP, or Student Growth Percentile, is it does account for the fact that we know that our students have different abilities and are going at different areas. So if we take a look at the graph here, again, when we're taking a look at all of our students, roughly four thousand students, this tool is new to us. This is our second year utilizing this tool. All the way on the left there, you see that number sixty-one point three. Sixty-one point three, that's sixty-one point three percent of our students in the fall to winter window of twenty-two to twenty-three. Sixty-one percent of our students were at what we call typical growth. So sixty-one percent of our students were making typical growth. Renaissance itself, they categorize students as low growth, typical growth, or high growth. So sixty-one percent of our students in the fall of twenty-two to twenty-three were at typical or above typical growth. When we take a look at how our students just performed in fall of twenty-three to winter of twenty-four, we now have sixty-seven percent of our students that are at least at what we call that typical growth, so typical to high growth. So we do see that upward trend, and this is in the area of math. When we move over to reading, we can see that number is a little higher. Again, starting at sixty percent of our students last year from fall to winter, where sixty percent of our students were making at least typical or above typical growth. And now, looking at the fall to winter of the assessment we just finished, seventy-five percent of our students are making what they call typical growth. So that's one way to look at how our students are doing, and this idea of growth. We have another area to look at it in the sense of proficiency. So STAR also does a lot of correlating between the SAT. So when we take a look at Proviso East, for instance, our grade eleven students, our grade eleven students that took that STAR assessment in the winter, STAR can basically take and have a correlation between what they would expect the students to reach as far as at benchmark or below benchmark. So STAR is predicting for Proviso East, grade eleven students, that twelve percent of those students would be at benchmark. And that's in ELA, in English Reading and Writing. And eight percent would be at or above benchmark in math. Now, when you look at these numbers, I just finished telling you, seventy-five percent of our students are making what is typical or above typical growth. And you look at this saying, only eight percent of students are at, are above benchmark in math and twelve percent in English. Again, that's the idea of proficiency and the difference between growth versus proficiency. I was working with my colleague, Mr. Spelney's trying to find an example for this. So I want you to picture basically a ladder. And on that ladder, you have all of your rungs, all the way from the first rung all the way to the top. And our students, we can imagine they're at various places in the rung of the ladder, and that would represent the knowledge that they have. We have students all over our rungs of our ladder. Again, picture Cindy versus Phil at those different grade levels. Proficiency is taking a look at how many students actually reach the top of the ladder. They are proficient in that area. Versus growth, growth is that idea of how many rungs of the ladder they are climbing between those specific time spans. Some students may be lower on the rungs of the ladder, but they are rising up that ladder a lot. And that's representing the idea that they are growing a lot. Even though they are growing, they may not be what you consider proficient as we measure by the College Board on the SAT. So that's that idea of the difference between proficiency versus growth. At Proviso West, when we take a look at our grade eleven students, what Renaissance is predicting, according to that winter assessment, continuing to learn and grow, at this point, ten percent of our students would be proficient or at or above benchmark in English Reading and Writing and nine percent in math. And then lastly, the Math and Science Academy, our grade eleven students, again, predicted based on their assessment in the winter, continuing to learn and grow. By the time they get to that April test of the SAT, forty-three percent would be predicted to be at or above benchmark in English Reading and Writing and forty-five percent in math. That is what I have for today. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I think this was a really good explanation of how the STAR program works, thank you.
Very well, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Asha. At this time, oh, I'm sorry, quick question.
Quick, quick question.
Yes, sir.
The percentages of students that were missing as it relates to those assessments.
Yes, sir.
What are we doing about getting a hundred percent participation?
So we do actively monitor during our assessment window and continually work with our administrators at each building. For instance, I'm picturing, Miss Lang, I'm picturing you in the back of my head right now getting constant emails of, hey, Ms. Asha, can I get the latest numbers of who hasn't tested? And continually testing, the same thing is happening at Proviso West. Same thing is happening at the Math and Science Academy. I will say on behalf of Proviso West, seeing those numbers a little lower than the other schools, one area that we're trying to work through is, for instance, the areas of math. You see, math percent assessed is the lowest. We run into the problem where not all of our students, for instance, are in the math class, especially that grade twelve year. So trying to find ways to still assess their learning, but to not try to negatively impact taking out of class time. So trying to be creative with those solutions with those areas. I will also say that we do have, looking at the attendance issues, that trying to, again, just continually work with trying to get those kids making those calls home. And this is one of those areas that, when we see that and see those patterns of those students that may not be attending and trying to work with those students and families.
Just off the top of your head, if you can, that's fine. Compared to last year, this being our second year, have we noticed an improvement? Did we make any improvements between last year's testing and this year?
As far as the percent assessed, or as far as growth?
Percent assessed, yeah.
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but I'd be happy. We do have the slides, I think, from last year, with Dr. Williams. Last year, we were regularly showing this information during those windows, so I'd be happy to pull that.
Yeah, I mean, aside from that one in math, they're pretty high, but they're saying we're still, I mean, granted, we want a hundred percent as much as possible.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
They're pretty high, thank you.
All right, what's the correlation between the SAT and the PSAT?
So the SAT and the PSAT, so we're taking those SAT, the suite of assessments. We have the PSAT eight-nine, we have the PSAT ten in the fall. We also have the PSAT NMSQT, which stands for the National Merit Scholarship. And then we also have the SAT. They all assess the same areas. SAT, if you work with College Board, they will say that the score that they, that the students get, since they're assessing the same thing, it's this scaled score, and that they assess the same areas, assess the same skills, but the length of the test is a little shorter for the eight-nine, the ten, and the same thing with the NMSQT, it's equivalent to the PSAT ten.
Now, you have STAR, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And what's the correlation to STAR?
So Renaissance, they have an important amount of information available that we can read through, but they do have correlation studies that they've done in multiple states across the nation to take a look at students' performance that they did on the SAT. And then at the same time, looking at the scaled score that they took in Renaissance. Again, the skills that they measure in Renaissance being equivalent to that of the SAT. And taking a look at those averages, averages of how students perform on the SAT and compare that to Renaissance.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Asha, once again. Now, we're gonna bring up for a brief update on our evening school program, Dr. Deborah Thomas.
We released schools early, so that could be here, because we were sure staff saw me. Good evening, President Grant, and board members. I'm here to talk about the first semester achievement of our forty-five students that were enrolled in our evening school program. We had forty-five students who were basically placed in evening school for various reasons by their homeschool. Many of them are highly deficit in academic credits. So we had twenty-three students from Proviso East and twenty-two from West for doing first semester. Our enrollment has changed because we're doing a new intake right now. So we're getting more students. Academic completions, which we are very proud of, because you must understand, for many of those students, getting them to sit still long enough to complete something is a major project. Getting them to see the value of what they're doing is a major project. And we spend a lot of time with dealing with the SEL. And we're very thankful to many of the community agencies that come in and partner with us and volunteer with us, because during this time, we didn't have, really have a budget. We had twenty-two students that completed three to four classes in academics. And that's a major, major task. Many of our students are working on computers, whether, many of them need one-on-one help or need blended learning, because we had twelve students who had IEPs that were included in our numbers. And they are progressing very well, I must say. We had twelve students that completed five to six classes and seven that completed seven classes. So even though those numbers seem small, but that's a great feat for the population in which I'm working, which we are working with, because I have a very dedicated team that works with me. Our attendance shows that we had several students who had ninety to ninety-nine percent attendance. Perfect attendance, almost. I have one student who probably was the most aggressive student we had, who had ninety-six percent attendance. So he's coming to us for something. And we're trying to meet him where he's at to elevate him. So we had two students from East and four from West. In the eighty to ninety percent range, we had two from East and three from West. And seventy to seventy-nine percent, we had four from each school. We have instituted contracts for those students who are falling below seventy-nine, seventy percent. Our target is eighty-five percent for all students. So those who have not been attending, we are constantly on the phone with their parents, bringing them in, seeing what services we can give them. We even have a day school program that PLCCA designed to help us, help students with their SEL needs, that they go to when they're not performing well academically or behaviorally. So that's, that's the data from our night school program for first semester. Just so you know, in the last few days, I've taken in five new students. We open up seven seats per school. And we're in the process of trying to bring fourteen more students from East and West into the night school program. So that's it, any questions?
I got a question, Ms. Thomas. You mentioned that, you said that we did not have a budget. What do you mean?
Any monies that have been spent in night school came out of my pocket and my staff's pocket. That's what I mean. So we did not have dollars available to us to fund the different activities that we were doing, such as every two months, we would do a recognition for our students. That was, we did. Actually, on February twenty-eighth, we're having out, popping into second semester. That's our theme. We're inviting you guys to come out and join us to recognize those students who had near-perfect attendance, because they're not used to getting that kind of attention. But no, we didn't have a budget. District dollars were not afforded us to fund what we were doing.
For kids? What?
I have to speak in reference to that, if I can. Yes, so last year, we gave monies for the evening school program, but those funds were not utilized. And this year, yes, it was the after-school grant, and we asked numerous times for orders to fund that evening school program. And if anybody need anything for any programming, they are welcome to come to the business office to accommodate, because we do support our students and want them to have what they need.
And I misspoke, because I didn't take advantage of that. And it came out of my pocket. So I apologize for misspeaking, but we wasn't aware that there was money that would cover the food aspect of which we, that's what we spent most of our monies on, so.
My wife's a teacher, and she's always spending money out of her pocket.
Yeah, so I didn't mean to misrepresent anyone, but that's where it's been coming from, because we didn't know.
I think it's important that these, you know, I believe in equity. If these students are not being served the way they should be, well, you know, that's a superintendent now. Superintendent doesn't pay attention with us now.
Okay.
Please do, because it's important to us.
And you all will be getting a personal invite from me and my staff to our next event on the twenty-eighth of February.
I got another question. So you say you were short today. Are you short some of the time, most of the time, or other times?
No, one of my, two of my staff members called in, and we didn't have a replacement. So when they, when somebody's out, I take the students. But I wasn't gonna leave my five people in the building. And we were down two, and I was gone too. So that's why we closed at seven-thirty today instead of it.
Yeah, just that and my back to Thomas, I'll split it that way.
Okay, thank you.
So Dr. Thomas, do you have your receipts to turn in? Because that's absolutely, you should not be handing quarter out of your pocket. We have plenty of money.
I probably have some of them, I don't know, because it's just what I do. I mean, I, like I said, I didn't know we had monies to cover what we were doing. But now that I do know, I will change that practice.
Dr. Thomas, quick question. Thank you for pushing and supporting this, this initiative. Very important that we afford opportunities to students at different levels and students with different schedules, so I thank you so much for what you're doing with this protected class of students. On your attendance, you've got twenty-three at East and twenty-two at West. And then I'm running that though, so those are the overall numbers for the evening school. So on the attendance side, then, when we talk about the percentages of, with attendance, at East, you've got a total of eight that are noted here. Where are the other fifteen?
They're less than seventy percent.
So they are, so the other fifteen at East are less than the other ten at West are less, so.
Correct.
And what, just refresh me, what are the age groups that we're doing, the class sizes?
Right now, we have sophomores through seniors. And any student with an IEP that has not graduated, even though their class has graduated, we take them in as well.
Thank you.
Because they don't qualify for the seniors plus program.
Thank you so much.
Do you get the addition of help because they are?
I did, last year, we were able to add an instructional aide and that help, so that she's able to float between classes to provide help as needed. So that's, that's-
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Next up, it's a bit of an interruption as well. As you know, we started the school year without a coordinator for English learners and bilingual education. We welcome to our team mid-year here, Mr. Demetrios Calleares. We call him Jim, who is going to give us an update, which is also an information item in your board book, on ISB-EL, bilingual compliance updates. So Jim, I'll let you take it from here.
Good evening, members of the board. Really happy to be here tonight. Happy Valentine's Day Eve to you all. So yeah, I started back- So yeah, I started, I started back on December 4th. One of the first things I heard about was some compliance issues we have with Illinois State Board of Education in our multilingual department. So that's something that I've been focusing on since I started back in December. We are moving in the right direction, but I wanted to bring some information to you all just to share what our goals are in the future and also how we can get into compliance with ISB. So you can see here that the two areas that we are out of compliance really have to do with staffing. We need more bilingual teachers and more teachers that are certified with English as a second language as certificates. So we do have a full-time bilingual education program and a part-time education program, part-time bilingual education program. In a full-time bilingual education program, there must be bilingual teacher teaching the class. In part-time, it doesn't have to be a bilingual teacher, but it's best that it is. We could get by with an ESL certified teacher in there and also having paraprofessionals that are bilingual to support in the classroom. So there's kind of some tiers on what's the best practice and then what we can get by with compliance. So where are we now? Currently, we have 467 out of 1,530 students that are designated as English learners at Proviso East High School. That's 31%. That's almost a third of our students. We currently have four bilingual certified teachers, one Language Arts, one Science, and one History teacher for all of those 467 ELL students. We also have six certified teachers that have their ESL, their English as a Second Language certificate, three in Language Arts, two in Math, and one in Science. This is a colorful chart here and I can probably, you probably can tell that the green is means good and the red means bad. So like I said, we don't have enough bilingual teachers and enough ESL certified teachers. So you can see in English Language Arts, we need some bilingual teachers there. And Math, we need some ESL certified teachers as at Proviso East. In Science, we need ESL certified teachers in certain areas. And also in History, we need them across the board. Any questions so far?
Yeah, how long have we been out of compliance or set off and on?
So this has been, I believe it's been, we're in our second year of being out of compliance. So yeah, this is something that I've been working with ISB, our, what do we call it? It's our colleague from ISB that's been working with me and our departments to become more in compliance and following all the checkmarks that we need to go and make sure that we are moving towards the direction of being compliant. So that has been most of my time right now, besides access testing, which is going on in all the schools currently.
One more question. What are the ratios for certified teachers versus paraprofessionals? Paraprofessionals are just to help, right?
Paraprofessionals are, another word for that is like classroom aide or yeah, teacher's aide. We don't have very many of them. Most of them are in the special ed department right now. But we could really use some bilingual paraprofessionals to support.
Right, because they just go take the test or you only just high school at home, right? I saw them pass it the other day.
Right, it's not the same certificate. They don't, yeah, you can have a college degree and then just take a test and become a paraprofessional.
So there's no ratios, it's just one-on-one, one-to-one?
No, it's not one-to-one. It could be a classroom paraprofessional for a whole group of students. They can move from classroom to classroom wherever the, where the need is most. So if we, in those classes that were not in compliance, that would be a place where we could put those bilingual paraprofessionals to.
The reason I'm asking is because you you will not put a paraprofessional to help the whole classroom. You don't have a teacher.
No, no, no. It has to be, yeah, they cannot be in the classroom by themselves as a paraprofessional. There has to be a certified teacher in the classroom. That's a good question. So at Proviso West, we have 480 students out of the 1,775 designated as English learners. That's 27%. And we currently have two bilingual certified teachers. That's it. One bilingual Language Arts and one bilingual History teacher. We have six ESL certified teachers, four in Language Arts, we're actually pretty good there, one Science and one History teacher that are certified with ESL. Here we are again with the reds and the greens. ELA bilingual is an area of need. We do not have enough bilingual ELA teachers at West. Math also, we could use some math bilingual teachers as well. And also ESL certified math teachers. In the area of Science, we need them across the board. We don't have any bilingual Science teachers at West right now. And History, we do need a few bilingual, bilingual certified teachers in the area of Black History. And finally, in ESL, in those classes that you could have an ESL certified teacher, those two classes, World Civilization, Yale Bridging, and US History Bridging, we need teachers in those areas as well. So you can see there's a great need. We need to do something about this, getting highly qualified teachers and paraprofessionals into the classroom to support our English language learners.
I have another question.
Sure.
So we have the need, but we have the budget because we were out of compliance. Like they have, do we have the budget in the state at each other's school?
For the certified staff of bilingual teachers? Yes, we do. We just need to recruit. The universities and other partners to offer teachers this opportunity here in the district.
And we're gonna be bringing forward an action item in terms of staffing as it relates to this. But we'll certainly be aggressive in our recruitment efforts in terms of going to job fairs, advertisement and other things. Unfortunately, there is a shortage across the state and the nation at that in regards to, well, paraprofessionals, because you know, paraprofessionals is a, is a, is a somewhat of a solution to this when you do pair them up with other teachers. The problem is that also throughout the state, we are experiencing an extreme shortage of paraprofessionals. It's not just our district, unfortunately, as it relates to the bilingual education teacher. You know, and that's, just to clarify, that's a specific certification. It doesn't just mean that you're bilingual and able to go into the class. You do have to have that specific certification and licensure through the state of Illinois, so.
Yeah, definitely.
Last question. With the migrant crisis, not immigrant crisis, migrant crisis, which they're legally allowed to come in, silent seekers and per se, do we have a plan of action because with the crisis going on, this number could change quickly?
Yes, and it is changing daily. We are getting new students daily in our schools.
Do we have a plan in place?
Well, this is what I'd like to recommend to the board for an action item for the next board meeting. So first of all, we need to post all of our vacant bilingual and ESL positions that we currently have for next school year. As a stopgap, I'm recommending that we post five bilingual paraprofessional positions at both East and West to support those classes that are not in compliance so that they can be in compliance. I'd like to begin an ESL or bilingual cohort throughout, through an accredited university to increase the amount of certified teachers in ESL bilingual. A lot of districts do that. We can reach out to different universities around here and start to grow our own program to get our teachers here certified. And then I'd like to, we're also attending job fairs to recruit teachers as much as possible. We have one coming up early March.
I think we tried our teachers, but.
We did.
And I think there is a program already in place that we started with Dominican years ago. We're, yeah.
Yes, so there was a program in place years ago where several of our teachers did take advantage and got their certification. As you know, you know, we have had a lot of turnover in past years, so some of those teachers have left. And the other thing is that we have to make sure that as we go through the programs and teachers are certified in that area, that they keep up their certification. So we have several that were certified and, but are no longer certified because they didn't keep up that certification. So I think as we move forward with any of those programs, that'd be one of the stipulations and things that we have to look at to ensure that, you know, we are kind of growing from within and expanding the number of folks that we have who are certified to serve our students. But the idea of retention and making sure that we keep our staff around as long as possible.
I have a question. The five bilingual paraprofessional positions, are we, are you talking about to help us finish up this school year or we're talking about next school year?
If we could post them immediately, I think that would be beneficial for the rest of this school year because we do have students in classes that are not understanding the instruction of a teacher.
And then would you, would you want to keep those for next year, just, just in case, or?
Yeah, I mean.
Is this necessary practice? Does it stop you up throughout the year?
I think it would be something that would be needed throughout the year and into the future because like you said, we have more and more bilingual students that are coming to us each year. And we're only gonna need more and more bilingual teachers or teachers that are licensed with their ESL certificate. These paraprofessionals are something that can assist because it is very difficult to find certified, highly qualified teachers nationwide right now. As Mr. Bryce said, it's a shortage.
I have one comment. Mr. Valter has mentioned funding. And we could get funding from the government, right, if we accurately report the number of ELL students?
That is correct.
In a prior conversation, you mentioned that maybe we're not accurately, well, we don't have the accurate number of ELL students, is that?
So that is something that we need to accurately represent which students we have in our full-time and our part-time bilingual programming. Currently, our students have been placed in kind of, they're not in the correct placement. That's something I'm working on with ISB right now. And our regular meetings that we're having in order to become in compliance, that's another issue that our students are not placed appropriately, which does impact our Title III funding that we get.
And then one last comment. The budget allocated to ELL, is it like 135,000? Is that roughly around there?
Yes.
Which is, I feel woefully underfunded, under-allocated. For 135,000 to service these students, it's pretty low. I think you would agree.
Yeah, I would agree. And then hopefully, if we get the, you know, our, our, the right, the right students in the right classes and reporting it correctly to the state, that we can get more money for, through our Title III funding. And I apologize for the mask. I have a sick child at home. I didn't want to spread.
Let me ask you a question, just trying to understand. So is this, is the program specifically for Spanish-speaking students? So if you're from Africa, you're from Asia, and you don't speak the language, do they come through your program?
So yes, that's a great question. And first of all, transitional bilingual education counts when you have 20 or more students in any facility, any school. So that's what, that's what qualifies you to have a transitional bilingual program. Or that means like if it were French students, we would have a transitional bilingual French. Currently, we only have Spanish as a language, but we have 20 or more in either of our schools. But students that come to us with, with different languages that are not Spanish, they also get support through ELL funding. And they are in a program that's called Transitional Program of Instruction, which is, they, they're supposed to have teachers that have ESL certi, sort of certificates as well.
Just want to be sure of that.
Yes, yes. So it's for any language that comes with other, so that home language survey that they, that they, when you register a student.
Speak any other language?
Right, there's two questions. If any of those questions are yes, any of those two are yes, then they're considered, once we screen them, if they have English language needs, then they would be considered an English language learner up until they pass the access test, maybe about 4.8 or higher.
Any other questions? No, thank you, Dr. Caleres.
Thank you. Mr.?
Oh, Mr. Sorry.
All right, thank you, Mr. Caleres. Our next presentation, Dr. Wardisani is gonna come up. He worked very closely with Dr. Carvalos, Dr. Wardisani, who was highlighted earlier today with an award. Is also our PTU president, president. But he's gonna guide us through the proposal as it relates to summer school for 2025.
Good evening. Award-winning John Wardisani.
The award-winning John.
Good evening, Ward. Yes, that's correct. Um, you know, actually, they might be go backwards, I think. Because I, I think it's best if we start with this one first. So in the collective bargaining agreement, there is a position, you know, titled Teacher Leader. It's a position that the PTU has been advocating for actually for quite a long time about providing those additional pieces of building level support in our content areas. So with, unfortunately, not unfortunately, but you know, currently, we have coordinators in the buildings, I mean, sorry, in the district, but we don't have that daily building component that's essential for doing things like improving structural practice and these other things. And I'm not gonna say that I don't think the coordinators are doing what they need, but clearly, you know, there's desperately a need in the buildings. And so providing that support at each of those levels in Science, Mathematics, Social Studies, Special Education, ELL. I mean, this is something that is honestly a pretty reasonable remedy to help provide some of those things that teachers are demanding that they need assistance with. This is also an excellent segue into, you know, and I think Mr. Pavoni is gonna be discussing this probably at the next meeting, but you know, the discussion leading to things like the department chairs and deans and bringing those essential staffing components back into the buildings. I mean, this is a need that, you know, teachers have been quite frankly demanding and especially requesting, you know, since the transition of the administrative model, as we might call it, in the buildings. So I mean, you know, my contention and the intention of the PTU is that, you know, we would request that the board earnestly move forward with posting those teacher leader positions so that we can start filling those for second semester. Now, in my discussions with Dr. Carvalos, the, I'm sorry, with, with, Dr. Carvalos, yes. That, you know, these are something that could be, again, transitional to if the board approved department chairs or deans. Of course, that's another conversation, but something that would definitely facilitate that change, that assistance, again, that the teachers are demanding or to be perfectly forward, you know, pleading for so we can do a better job of, of supporting our student needs. So to that point, can I answer any questions?
What does that have to, is this about summer school?
No, no, no. I, I changed this one. So I went backwards. So I was talking about the teacher leader positions outlined in the collective bargaining agreement. Yes, ma'am.
Right, I do have some questions. So the teacher leader position that you're talking about is currently in our CBA?
Yes, ma'am. It is currently in the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay. I'm just wondering if we, was that built into the staffing plan for this year?
To, I can speak to that one.
These are for the teacher leader positions.
Yes.
As far as I recall, they are stipended positions.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be an additional FTE. These would be stipended positions from our active staff.
Okay, and then, so if we don't have them, but they are in the CBA, are we in violation of the CBA or it's, how does that work?
It's, we'd have to review the CBA, but if it leaves the discretion of the board to decide what positions it's going to staff, then the answer is no.
Okay.
And I believe for stipend positions, we have that.
Okay, but this is something that people are requesting.
Yes, because I mean, we, if I'm a science teacher in a building, but I, or a math teacher, does whatever. And then I'm trying to, if I need daily support, if I need resources, those types of things, yes, there are district coordinators that fill that role, but what we're missing is that building level piece. So you know, if, if I'm struggling with some of those things, I may not have daily access to those, to those key folks that might be able to come out and help. So if I'm a teacher and I'm struggling with things like classroom management or I'm struggling with some of these other fundamental pieces in my classroom that may limit my ability to do well, I mean, yes, I have to use the tech, but usually the best remedy is that collaboration with colleagues. And that's why that department chair position, which historically has been there, where they would facilitate new professional development, work with real level articulation, instructional practices, all those things that historically would happen in that department chair role that, you know, is not always there, right? There's an inconsistency piece that we'd like to address.
Okay, so you mentioned. Okay, so you mentioned department chairs as well.
Yes, ma'am. I, I'm sorry, I, I'm, what, teacher leader, in, in my feeling is a segue to department chairs for, you know, for another academic year. But in the meantime, teacher leaders would function as, or give teachers the ability to have a ready, accessible resource in the buildings to support their work.
Okay, so I, just so I'm hearing you and you represent the teachers.
Yes, ma'am.
You're, you're formally suggesting that we bring the department chairs back?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely positive.
Okay, and then that is definitely a separate position from the teacher leader position?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
I mean, the department chairs are actually in the recognition clause of our current collective bargaining agreement. What I'm saying, I mean, that's, that's another item for the board to discuss, and that's really a human resource thing to not mind. Uh, what I'm saying is that the current language in the collective bargaining agreement has a teacher leader stipend position. I would like, you know, we would like to see that back as a transition, but it would definitely help the boots on the ground doing the work in the classrooms right now.
I got a question, because I confused this Grant.
Okay, and then after you have some ideas.
Because it seems like he's making recommendations. The recommendations only come from the superintendent. I don't mind us talking about it, but we're, we're totally, this is totally off.
I would disagree simply because I think.
No, no, ma'am. Isn't there grievance, isn't there grievance against, in reference to this matter?
No, no, there's not. At this time, I think that what you're bringing up does definitely need board discussion because it's the board that gives direction to a superintendent.
Well, we don't even have a superintendent, Miss Grant.
Well, then hang out. We got action item coming up.
No, I'm not going to hang on. I think this is totally inappropriate. It's highly inappropriate. It is highly inappropriate. I'm sorry. The attorney is sitting there. I don't mind us having the discussion, but if we're going to do this, let's do it right. Because this is clearly a proposal to move and do something. Recommendations come from the superintendent. This is what happens when we don't have leadership. If everybody is taking the role, Miss Grant.
The board has to give direction.
I understand. You don't have anyone to give, but this should even be, this is highly inappropriate.
And this is something that we're discussing a bit now, and we're going to discuss even more in depth, but the next.
And that's fine. Well, let's wait until next, but to have this going on right now as though the president of the teachers union is the superintendent, that's inappropriate.
He's not acting as the superintendent.
I don't know what he's acting as, because I, I'm totally.
We're, we're talking about staffing recommendations for summer.
I've sat here for seven years. I will never say nothing like this, Amanda, and you haven't either. No, ma'am. I'm sorry.
So we can discuss it at the February twenty-seventh meeting, but discussing it right now is wrong for some reason?
It should be.
It needs to be discussed.
It needs to be discussed. I believe there's a grievance in reference to this.
Recommendations come from the superintendent.
We are.
No, we don't.
More at the February twenty-seventh meeting, but it is something that the board needs to consider because we did have an organizational change within the past three years.
And it would be a superintendent that would tell us we need to consider that. It would be the superintendent's job to make that recommendation to us. Who's making it now?
The board can discuss and help determine direction. That is what we do.
Based upon the recommendation of the superintendent, we're not educators. So we couldn't tell Mr. Wardisani right now what to do if we wanted to. We can't give him any suggestions.
We're not educators. We shouldn't listen to an educator tell us what we need because we need someone who we don't have right now.
I understand. We all support the teacher.
That doesn't make any sense.
But.
But it's the rules.
This is important. What he's saying is important.
We're not denying your man.
So that later we can discuss this and determine a way to move forward.
But no one is denying.
Then what's the problem with him saying?
Because it should be a superintendent to be in place. This is what happens when you're trying to do your own thing.
It has to be discussed.
You're not the superintendent.
Dr. Wardisani.
You want to be.
Can you continue with the summer school plan? Thank you.
One more, one more question, sir. The confusion, Amanda, is it's not in here for discussion. It's in here as staffing requests. So maybe the wording in the agenda is wrong too. It's not in here for a discussion or an information, Adam, and I would understand your point. This is someone making a request as it is in the agenda of the board. The only person that does that for us is the superintendent. So I've never in my seven years had a administrator, someone else, without the recommendation of the superintendent do that. Now, if he's presenting on behalf of the superintendent, then just clarify that and say, this is behalf of Dr. Carvalos. It's real simple.
He mentioned several times that he had discussed this with Dr. Carvalos. This is something that they were working on. I understand it.
Is he here on behalf of him?
Help us build a staffing plan. What is your question? You said you had a question. What is it?
It's not the question of whether or not it's needed or not. We're talking about procedures. And we're talking about whether or not we're going to start getting in lieu of not having a superintendent, but requests being made for staffing decisions from administration, union, whoever it is, and that's not the superintendent makes that decision and that recommendation to the board. This is in here as a staffing request. That's a request. So the way it's worded and the way that he's presenting it is telling the board what, from his perspective, as a teacher and a union, should the district need. That's not his role. He can make, he got the conversation, but he should not be suggesting to us what this district needs. That's not his job. No disrespect. That's the superintendent's job. Okay, so if we're going to start doing that, then anyone can come up here now, get on the agenda, if you allow us to, and tell the district what they think, or tell the board what they think we need. We have one employee. And I understand what, I'm not saying nothing against him, it's just about just procedures and practices that we need to have too. There's no urgency for that. There's nothing that's going to happen tonight.
If I could just make a recommendation, as we proceed with our, our staffing plan for next year, in cooperation, in cooperation with the, the superintendent, we'll bring back some, some items as it relates to staffing holistically, uh, from, from certified staffs and beyond that. And, and we could address this issue, you know, with the superintendent in the seat. I would recommend that we just, if it's okay with you, go to the summer school fees.
Summer school, yes.
So that way we can move forward.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so thank you, board. So to be clear, I mean, so this is a, an item discussed with the superintendent. It is, I mean, it's not an information item. It's definitely not an action item. But yeah, the discussion, and if for the purposes of transparency, is about, you know, offering or moving summer school twenty twenty-five back, I'm sorry, to a more direct original credit course. So historically over the past several years, we've been using ingenuity. The thought would be to offer more original course, uh, credit course offerings in math, science, et cetera, uh, to the, to the students. Obviously, you know, as a teacher, I strongly believe that teacher led instruction is actually the best, or one of the best mechanisms for making sure that we, we serve our students. The only item that was, you know, that was proposed to the superintendent was of course asking for students to, you know, pay for the cost. A hundred dollars per course for original course credit, and then of course a hundred dollars for students to attend ingenuity courses during the summer. So I mean, that's, that was the discussion I had with, um, with administration regarding what summer school could potentially start moving forward and looking like with that, with the interest of making sure that we're serving the kids in our best way by offering their original credit. We haven't always, we haven't done recently, for lack of a better word.
Does anyone have any questions about the summer school proposal?
So we're looking to charge families now? Have we been charged in many years?
Well, no, ma'am. I mean, they haven't been charged in years. I mean, but.
They have not, right?
They have not.
Right.
But the whole, the, the thought's always been, but the need is, you know, do we charge students? I mean, the, the difference between what, what we propose, let's say a hundred dollars a course, this is outlined here, um, as opposed to let's say three hundred dollars, which typically is in like Riverside Brookfield.
But we're not Riverside.
Yes, ma'am.
You're going, I will fight you back on this because I fought for it before. Many of our children cannot afford fifty dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
And to turn around now and say, we want a hundred?
Well, I mean, I, I think students that would have a difficulty, you know, being able to pay for original course credit. I mean, these are all, we can always, that could be waived, but that'd be something that under the board and the superintendent. You know, the, the proposal was just simply that we try to move in that direction. And of course getting kids to, you know, for lack of a better word, to put some skin in. What we're seeing is, you know, I think what we've seen over the past couple of years is, you know, kids, you know, we want kids to do it. We want them to be involved and engaged. We want them to also, you know, you know, pay to, help pay to do that. Now, I mean, obviously it's the discussion of the board, obviously, you know, whether that occurs or not. But I think from a teacher's perspective, you know, many teachers believe that having students, you know, pay a portion of this, sorry, pay this fee is a good way of, of getting them involved, engaged, enrolled, uh, and connected to their original credit work or their ingenuity work for that matter. So that's the, that was just the, you know, the proposal we wanted to, to offer. Obviously, the board would have to make a decision on that.
So what you're saying is instead of having ingenuity, the program that we paid this money for, let's grab that and then we just have teachers stand before the students?
No, ma'am. I, I mean, I think that's a hybrid. You know, a original course credit, you know, having, having students, especially incoming students, right? We're talking about incoming eighth graders coming in freshman and offering them those courses. And then allowing that, you know, as they reach those course requirements, then they can do other really cool things at the end, right? So students could do things like CTE, or they can do dual credit, or there's all these other things that their schedule would allow them to do or free up. Uh, I'm not saying the ingenuity should be removed. I'm saying that ingenuity is, was originally designed as a supplement to direct instruction. And so ingenuity by itself is not a standalone. Now, I, I realize that we've historically used it as, you know, as that, you know, kind of credit on a corporate facility piece. But, you know, if we're really going to try to, if the goal would be to try to move things forward academically, is, is, are the students better served by original credit? Yes, ma'am, I think so. And as a teacher, you know, having, having students in front of us as we're actually physically walking through them as opposed to just, you know, pecking at, at a program, you know, without that, without that facilitation piece, I think we're missing something.
I, could you ask me a thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, when I'm looking at this, as a parent, if I'm paying a hundred dollars, you're going to school. So that's the way I'm looking at it. And yes, yeah, the economy is rough. But realistically, I see the three hundred dollar gym shoes. I see the four hundred dollar hair waves. A hundred dollars is worth it. So I'm just keeping it real. Hundred dollars is not too much to ask anyone to take an investment for their time.
Yes, ma'am. I think it is an investment in students.
I think it's a reasonable thing too, that when you are putting a, a dollar amount on something, it's perceived to have more value. Like I have paid for this, so therefore I will get my money's worth out of it. And that would help increase attendance at summer school as well.
So, 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 so let me be clear.
Sure.
Because we have a lot of people proceeding to talk about the social economic condition of this district. And, and I wanted to be clear that we've been there before. So let's just talk about, this isn't something brand new. We were charging for summer school and no one was coming. We did not just stop charging because we, because students couldn't afford it or could afford it. The attendance was ridiculously low. So we've been here. There's a rationale for this. So if you want to go back and repeat history without considering or looking at what was it like when we did charge families? What was the participation then? And this was way before ingenuity. This is when we had teachers in the classroom, when the attendance was ridiculously low. So now what the children are going to do and the parents who can't afford it, and Sam, you and O'Campbell will speak to this. A lot of these students are going to be migrants that are going to need these things. So let's be clear, let's be clear with what we're talking about. When we talk about the in total, the encompassing social economic, which is another reason we considered it when we did it, because of our large migrant population. So I understand people saying what you think you see on certain groups, beating things like that. That doesn't represent the whole and the largest part of this con, of this district, which does not have a hundred dollars. But do need that extra learning. We're talking about putting money in the classroom, but then we don't want to put the money in this, you know, we don't want to make it available for them to supplement. This was done for a reason, so we can bite ourselves in the, in the, in the tooth by saying, okay, yeah, we want to put all this money in ELL. But then when they don't articulate, they can't afford to come to summer school and do so. Come on, people. You guys got to look at the history of where this district begins, and we've tried that model before of charging. Didn't work.
Who gives stats on that?
So, let me just, let me just say this. This district is one hundred percent free lunch, reduced lunch.
Right.
Right? And because of that, you can't, you have to give feet wipers. You do know that, right?
And I, and as I mentioned, yes, I mean, it's.
I just want us to, I, I know we talk about the gym shoes. Some of us don't know how some of those kids get the gym shoes and the weed and the, we don't know what they did to get it. I'm not here to determine that. But I do know that we are one hundred percent reduced lunch.
One hundred percent.
And with that being said, summer school should be free. And it will be free because everybody's going to get a foot weeper.
And President, we, we can, and Board, we can, we can bring this back to the leadership team process a little bit more. We are going to bring forward an action item in, in regards to summer school, um, so that we can move forward. That includes staffing as well. So we, we can move on to the, uh, to the action item during the next board meeting, if, if that's appropriate.
Sure, as I mentioned, that, um, all of the staffing plans for summer school and for the regular school year do need to be discussed more in depth. This is something we'd definitely like to, um, consider. It's my recollection that we started waiting fees for summer school and regular school at the start of COVID. The summer of twenty twenty is when we began doing that. So it would be interesting, I think, to see historically, um, attendance records of summer school. Um, and we can kind of match that up with the fees that were paid, um, or not paid or waived. But that's something that definitely we need, um, more time for at the next meeting.
Does anyone?
Thank you so much.
Spoke with the coordinators in reference to the summer school? Was this just something you came up with?
I had a, I mean, I had a conversation with PTU members about their, about what they would like to see, or sorry, their hopes of, of moving, um, summer school. What we'd like to see, or what, what we would, as teachers, would recommend to see what summer school might move.
So there's been no, no communication with the board?
As, as.
All right, that's all out to yours. Do you have a question?
So next we have Mr. Elsie Taylor, as well as Perkins Will and Yvain, will present regarding the facilities master plan update.
Good evening, Board of Education. Community members, Mr. Brice, everyone. Tonight we have three presentations for review. FMP dollar allocation, uh, the living document that was spirited by Dr. Rodriguez twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. We have an FMP overview and refresh from Perkins and Will, and we have a construction update from Yvain. I will get started with, um, talking about the ten year facility master plan. That was in the totality of seventy-seven million dollars. The plan should have started in twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two for phase number one, with proviso east being the highest level of severity related to construction in the magnitude of forty-seven million dollars. Proviso west, twenty-three million, and math and science roughly five point four. You notice the allocation for phase two, there was really no money allocated. This twenty million dollars is here because we believe that we would have savings from the program, and the program should have started in FY twenty-three and ran through twenty twenty-five. Uh, then phase three, there was no money allocated, and it should have started in twenty-six, which is not here yet, and ran through twenty twenty-eight. During the, uh, infant stages of this project, we wanted to make sure that Perkins and Will got ahead of, um, some of our nineteen eighty-eight deficiencies around health and safety. Perkins and Will did a great job identifying most of these items through East, West, and Math and Science Academy. On the far left, these were urgent items. We had one year to complete those, and the requirement items, although we had twenty-four months to complete those. Recommended items were prematurely picked and, um, most of them was not done because it was only recommendations from Perkins and Will. This slide here shows you what urgent mean. Urgent, you know, you have to get them done pretty soon. Required, recommended, and then the totality of the dollars on the bottom for urgent for east, it was seven hundred and thirty thousand. West was nine hundred and thirty thousand. PMSA was roughly fifty thousand dollars. Required for east was ten point five. Proviso west was three point seven, and it was zero dollars for proviso math and science academy. Uh, please remember that this was a living document at the time, and it still is a living document where we can move items up or move items down depending on the severity and the need in the school at that time. Uh, we did break this up into three different categories, academic site and infrastructure. We wanted to make sure that we were equitable across. We wanted to make sure that we were equitable across these lenses because all parts of the construction needed some attention. The field house renovation, renovation did not get completed in phase one at proviso east because we, not we, Dr. Hardy and his team at the time believed that it was the best value to bring in the auto shop into the memorial hall at proviso east and go for a field house renovation in the second phase and bring on a football stadium in the first phase. Um, you'll notice the CTE over proviso east, that got done. Culinary got done, CTE is also the auto shop. Uh, the site work was a parking lot that was moved from the west side of the park, of the first avenue over to the east side. And then the stadium reconstruction happened. Phase one at proviso east also included an infrastructure, air conditioning on the third floor, and electrical air pump rates. Most of that work has been done, but there is still lots of this work to be completed. We're going to move on to west. Uh, CTE over proviso west. You'll notice here it says advanced manufacturing lab, welding lab, engineering, auto, wood, plumbing, electrical at the time.
The phases were from what year to what year, phase one?
Sir.
What were the years for phase one?
Phase one was twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, I believe, was?
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah. Go ahead, begin.
Yep, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
That's when we started that work in the, in the proviso west indoor track. So this is proviso west work. We completed advanced manufacturing lab. We did have the welding lab on, but that got pulled because of the FMP refresh. It needed to be refined and re-vetted out. Uh, that work was completed by Perkins and Will and the building principals. Uh, that will be in a later slide tonight from Perkins and Will. Uh, the circuit entry was part of phase one. Um, that was a high-level concern back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. This work has not been done, but it's been proposed, and we're really hoping to get that work done soon. Parking lot over proviso west on the north side was completed. That was a Brian milling and re-overlet, restriping, uh, that was taken care of. And we have this teachers lot on the east side of the building and, uh, near D ramp. Uh, all completely redone. Air conditioning on the third floor was completed. Bathroom renovations did not happen because it was discussion around domestic cold water coming in. It was about seven million dollars over budget because we need to replace all the piping from the head end all the way through the bathroom. Hot water tanks, that was replaced over proviso west high school. That work is great. Um, exterior enclosure, partial, not all. So many, and the reason why it was partial, because we did work on the third floor. We wanted to make sure we did the, did the windows on the third floor that year. The following year was twenty-two. We did work, um, AC on twenty-two, so we wanted to make sure we blew the windows and capture those savings, and the same thing with this summer. So proviso west, first, second, and third floor, academic wing is complete with AC. We're going to move on to proviso math and science academy. That was parking lot circulation work done and some signage outside. Uh, the AC controls did not make the budget. Uh, this is something that's critical. Uh, this building has no operable windows, and we hope and pray over the next eighteen months or so, we can gather two to three million dollars to get this work completed. If we lose the controls in this building, we will have to close this building. Zero condition in this building without having operable controls.
When you, I'm sorry to interrupt. When you say operable controls, you mean the ability to control the temperature? Or do you mean like the furnace won't kick on, or what do you mean by that?
So we have unit ventilator boxes in our ceilings and that controls the amount of CFMs, which is air that gets to the occupied spaces. Once we lose complete control of those.
The circulation is permitted, or what, what do you mean? CFM?
Yeah, so CFMs is the amount of air that goes into the space.
Okay.
To actually condition the space to cool and or heat it.
Okay.
Uh, because the VAP boxes do, are from twenty twenty, from two thousand and five, no IT infrastructure supports that anymore. We've been asking for this for about four or five years. Um, and literally, when it get really cold outside, we have to jump in ceilings and manually adjust. Some of them you can't adjust because they're frozen in place. So we have to cut holes in, in it to get air into, to that space. It's pretty critical if we get this done in math and science academy.
Thank you.
Elsie, what was the question?
Well, the first year, we were going through a reconstruction with our engineers and our architects. KJWW originally designed it, and we put it on hold. We did receive a grant that we did not feel because the project was, we only had like six months to use it, and we lost about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars grant money uh, through a COPH grant that we collaborated with, with the builder of Elwood. Um, then it got kicked to the road again, down the road again, when the FMP started because it was mentioned that PMSA really don't need anything. Um, I pushed back on that because I'm in this building at least twenty-five hours a week and I see the challenges. We need to spend some money here. This building's from two thousand and five, and it was not a complete renovation when we took it over and made the school from an office building. Most of this work in phase two, start with proviso east, did not get done. Field house renovation, that is on the table. That is a hope, wish, and dream, and hopefully reality of mine and Mr. Hall. Um, we would also like to see a few more classrooms updated over proviso east. Because of COVID monies, S R funds, we're able to finish the second floor over proviso east. That was actually in phase two. Uh, same thing with proviso west. We were able to finish the second and third floor because of COVID funds and savings, uh, from Gilbain saving, helping us save money through the projects. Um, we also need to make sure we pay, uh, close attention to our sports fields over proviso west. Um, most of our sports fields, they're in pretty bad shape. Um, same thing over proviso east, our tennis courts. You cannot play competition on them or receive emails at least once a week about the condition. Um, that do need to be vetted out, and we do need to make sure we allocate some funds. That don't mean we do twelve courts. That mean we could do two at a time because we don't have a huge tennis team. So I don't recommend doing twelve, but we need to do something. Um, uh, moving on to math, math and science. Math and science, uh, little to no work was done, but obviously there, there's need to be work done here. Uh, there's one thing that's not on here that Mr. Brown would love to see. He would love to see some type of theater here. Um, math and science is heavily engaged in that theater. Um, we did not add it to the scope of work. I don't think we brought it up, Mr. Chalmers in your meeting. But, um, Mr. Brown would love to see that. And, and I was just talking to Ms. Watson over proviso west today, uh, at the Black History Play that math and science would love something similar to proviso west, so. Um, I do know we have limited amount of monies and we have to prioritize things, but we really need to look at the facilities master plan. It's been great working with the facilities master plan over the last three or four years. Uh, and it's really valuable to enhancing the quality of the buildings. Uh, when teachers go to proviso east, they are surprised and shocked how great it looks. Um, a lot of money has been put, spent at proviso east because it was the highest level of severity. And I do believe we need to pivot on that, um, obviously with the superintendent recommendation to the board. Uh, but we do need to pivot on that and make sure that we be a little bit more equitable in math and science and proviso west this time. Uh, that's all I had unless there's some questions about this. This is a living document, please remember that. Uh, we do plan to engage in conversations with Mr. Pavone and the superintendent of schools and add in any items that get approved from Perkins and Will's reports.
Elsie, do you have, um, the finances?
Yeah, so Dr. Hill shared that last week around meeting, uh, and I believe Mr. Pavone, he got it to you.
No, I, I got it, yeah. Looks like I thought you were going to show the board. So I sent it to you, Board, again. Just the, you know, because we, we, we had in our mind since, uh, twenty nineteen, seventy-seven million, right?
Correct.
But we did all this work and we got lucky with COVID. I say lucky because we got twenty mil. And we were to complete more work than we had planned for the FMP. There was no way we were going to do it, uh, with just the seventy-seven million. But because of that, we're actually, what was the total amount that we spent?
Roughly a hundred sixteen, seventeen million. That's in, that's in the next slide we go back to.
Ah, okay.
About a hundred seventeen million total, yeah.
So I have a question. When, you know, when we, we were first putting together the facilities master plan, we had all the community meetings and everyone kind of prioritized what they wanted. Is it time to do that again? Or when we're talking about a refresh, like what does it look like in terms of community input?
In my opinion, and I agree with Perkins and Will, and I'll also agree with the superintendent of schools, because we have two phases to complete, we should look at the additional projects that's needed, but we need to kind of hone in on phase two projects.
Okay.
First, get through year number one of phase two, and then do those community engagement, student engagement, so on and so forth.
So we're, we're still at least a year out?
Thank you.
Right, right.
That's what we need to, that's, we have to go back there and.
So that's why I'm asking like a refresh, like what is that involved? Okay, so we still need to tackle though, are you recommending we still tackle this year one of phase two?
I'm just, I mean, I remember that time Dr. Rodriguez got a, uh, he had retired financial CFO and remember that was community finance committee, and we were able to find those seventy-seven million. And we allocated four point five to meet that budget every year, which we did. But then, uh, we wanted to do the balance with Dr. Henderson, the number of seventy-seven million.
The additional?
The, the additional forty, forty-four and thirty-three was forty-seven, I mean, well, seventy-seven million. Seventy-something, ten million, or something, something just coming up. So remember, seventy-seven million, we spent a hundred and sixteen. If you just take a quick look, you could say we're over budget, right? I'm just, I'm not saying we're over budget, I'm just saying if you just do the quick math. So we need to go do step one again. CFO, you know, finance, go into it. Then we get the projects and get the community bonds to see what we should do, which ones we should do, and then go into phase.
Phase two. So re-remember those meetings, community engagements, sessions, town hall meetings, that took about eighteen months.
Yeah.
So.
Well, right, that's why I'm asking, so we're, we're still.
Still in this ten year plan.
And then we'll start again when this is completed.
Yeah, so we're in technically a year four, year seven years, April.
And financial works just started now to keep the, the facilities master plan going. And as a facility master plan is moving along, those meetings are still happening so that you won't have that eighteen to twenty-four month gap from start to finish.
It really took a seven year from then to now. It's been seven years, yeah. Even those four years of the actual work, seven years total.
Okay.
And so those years we're planning two and a half.
All right, any other questions?
Question?
Yes, sir.
So, so in the process, I'm sorry, I couldn't make the committee meeting, I had a plan to come and say. So just in plain English, how much money do we have in the fund to continue the facilities master plan ongoing? How much money do we have?
I can't speak to the financial side of the house. Um, I do know back in April was roughly fifty to fifty-one million dollars approved. So, and there's seventeen to eighteen million remaining for this summer for proviso east, um, lower level and library work over proviso east.
So that's, so a, a large portion of it, and that was contingent upon us saving four point five a year. Okay, so after we got to a certain amount and the actual cash was gone, we had to make sure that we were maintaining a four point five overage every year so that we could continue this program. I think the presentation that the public in the board needs to hear is where we're, where we are with that. Just in plain language, have we done that? Where is this fifty-one million dollars coming from? Because it's not coming out of the seventy-seven million. So I just wanted to be clear so that we don't get stuck with the bill. We're already, what, from seventy-seven to a hundred and sixteen over? And we're still talking about doing projects, but my question is, where's the money to pay for them? So now we're basically paying for things that we don't have the money to fund. So then where's that going to come from? And this is just simple. Because the FOP will be back here in a second. We're just, we're just, it's like we're just being irresponsible and saying we're just going to go and act like we didn't do an FMP and we didn't have a plan. And once the money gone, that means you stop shopping.
I do agree that the financial side of the FMP do need, uh, quite a bit of work.
Yeah, that includes me, not just the financial team. Right.
Uh, we do need to work with the superintendent to make sure that work is refined and you guys are happy with what we, our final conclusion is to the superintendent. But back in April, it was reported that fifty-one million dollars was coming out of the eighty-seven or eighty-six million dollar fund balance to pay for the remaining construction. Uh, and I'm not sure if that.
Then if we.
Actually happened, but it got approved.
Transfer from the education fund, now it's not coming out of the education, it's just a general fund where it's for everything.
Right.
People get confused sometimes, this is careful.
So if I can interject for one second, yes, um, I do agree.
Okay, let's be careful.
Yes.
So, T, uh, well, Dr. Hill just said, I mean, um, Elsie, Rodney. That's why I was bringing this to the board.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it. If that's why.
No, we're glad because.
So we can see where we are.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
And then it just, because we're sitting here much, meeting after meeting after meeting, and I still haven't gotten a balance for the construction fund. And that, what's been, what's in the bank? What do we have to spend? That's just a simple question. And if the answer's zero, then I, what are we going to do? Well, are we just going to keep spending like we have money? That we don't? Because I want that out and I want to make sure that we're, because we were, said Dr. Henderson to get us this far. But we were not just moseying along. This was very well thought out and planned. And I don't think it's, you know, we'd be irresponsible as senior board members to sit here and act like we can just keep going and this was the way it was in the beginning. It was not. It was not. This was planned down to the dollar, what we needed to do to continue. And I just don't want it to leave the board sick, we got a problem. Now we got trains and stuff out there, we can't move.
Yeah, so for twenty-five, we have zero construction going through the pipeline at all. We also had a meeting early February with Dr. Cavales, uh, around the concern of our monies. Uh, with myself, uh, Mr. Pavone, Dr. Hill, and we decided to do exactly what you just.
Okay, that's all.
That meeting happened around January sixth or eighth or so.
Correct.
But just know, Board, that we're in a very good position. Um, the education environment was facing now.
Okay.
So, I mean, we did above and beyond what we planned, to be honest.
Yes, we did.
And thanks to Cody, it was twenty million. And I think, um, I don't put them on the spot, in the state, Chris Welch's case.
Yeah, that, that helped too. Uh, Speaker Welch als, also, um, awarded proviso ten million dollars. I'm not sure what we spent that money on or if we received that money, but he did, um, allocate that mon, money through the state budget for us. That helped us too.
So Elsie, just then, uh, Dr. Hill, so we should be able to cover the sixteen mil that we owe. And I think, uh, we'll some money to Gilbain, right? And Perkins and Will, it's for sixteen, we'll cover all the howl.
Want to believe that was everything from the last couple of years, I remember looking for that. Yeah, but Dr. Hill has asked that we do, uh, cash flow analysis to show her what dollars.
So, um, it's been numerous, or remember, um, Alexander, that we had numerous conversations towards. That's it.
That's it.
If we don't have the money, we have to pause. And so coming into this seat, I shared with, um, Mr. Taylor and Dr. Cavales, and we all agreed that if the funds are not in the pot right now, let's continue to build up our fund balance, get the finances on track, and then proceed with these projects. And someone mentioned priorities right now, and what do we have the funds for? So as we speak for Fund Sixty, which is where the facility master planners. So remaining from that, we're looking at about fourteen, fifteen million, but we can also get the remaining from the Fund Twenty account. But after that, that's all we have, and I'm from the country, so excuse me when I say, that's all we have we can do right now. That's it. Um, we have to just pause. Once we pause and come back to the table and really figure out what we need to do is all a.
Question really quick. Um, that's something Sam said sparked this. Um, you mentioned that, you know, we had the seventy-seven million set aside in the very beginning with Dr. Rodriguez.
Four point five, with the fifty we found on the three five, and then the four point five allocation.
So the, the four point five million was going into it every year?
To accomplish the seventy-seven.
Right.
Okay.
It was really fifty, remember, on the finance, maybe it's fifty that we found.
Do we still have the four point five going in every year?
No.
No, we don't.
Because that stopped a couple of years ago.
The year two of the FMP that stopped, twenty, twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one, we stopped putting that extra money in, okay?
Because we received all the S R funds.
We got all.
Right, so that's something now, because we're not getting those funds, that maybe we need to revisit.
And then I just want to add to, um, the report that I shared with Mr. Pavone that we reshared with the board, um, when Dr. Grossi presented, um, where we were at. And, you know, of course, these are just recommendations. And, you know, of course, these are just recommendations, we don't have to listen to them. But the recommendation to consider bonds, that was the conversation that was on the table. That's the recommendation, um, from, um, the consultant that came in.
Their bonds, well, we know exactly what we're spending them on.
What we're spending on, cause completely construction. If we continue where we at now, we will be okay. But if we're considering construction projects. Thank you.
All right, at this time, if there's no more questions, we'll bring up purpose of will to go over some high level preliminary projects that the building principals asked us to put on. You will see some dollars that, uh, we believe could scale up or scale down related to what the scope will be forty more slides ago.
So wait.
There's no action at all.
No action at all. I'm saying if approved down the road, not like tonight.
Right, so we're getting ready to go over some.
No, it's just information.
Yes.
Okay, uh, what the principal's want?
Yeah, because.
But did you say we go in for money?
How did I know? No, there need to be an exercise to identify the funding source.
But he asked us to do this, we didn't ask him first, he asked me to.
To say what you want?
He asked us to.
Well, it's a collaboration piece amongst athletics, the educational side of the house, operations and maintenance side of the house. Uh, because we wanna make sure we key, key in on that site infrastructure and academic piece. And we don't have the money for these projects that I know of.
Yeah, but I just, what I'm saying is, we're getting ready to sit here for forty slides.
Why would we put?
You know, we were, we were, we were asked to put this presentation together.
Okay.
We didn't, this isn't like pushing on you.
For this, some of this information is in, yeah, F M P.
This isn't the other, the, the.
Right, the second.
Okay, but I'm just saying, if we're not, if we're stopping that.
If you guys wanna listen to, that's fine, I mean, we did it in the, the facilities committee like in ten minutes.
No, we could go ahead, I just, yeah, just gonna sit here and watch something.
Right, right.
But just because of this tells us like, like where we should start aiming for. And we don't have the money, but these are things that, you know, and hopefully these are needs and not necessarily wants, that we can say, okay, this is important at P M S A, this is important at us, this is important at East. We need to start thinking about what's gonna come first and how we get that funding for these items.
Yeah, right.
I mean, that's, that's a simple one, I mean, take us west and it's the bathrooms, you know, for that second mission, cause if you're gonna do the bathrooms, you gotta do the problem.
Right.
So that's an easy one there. P M S A, we've decided the controls.
Right.
This is in closed building, we need to filter outside air, air pollution, rooftop, you know. East, well, this is good enough.
And we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that these are in order of magnitude, but this is what I don't want to happen. I'm sure everyone on the board have heard about the roof over Proviso West, um, for the East-West game. It was a catastrophe to say the least, because we were at the element's mercy. That roof should have been replaced ten years ago. If we keep kicking these cans down the road and don't be responsible and spend something, even if it's three million a year, we have to spend something to keep these buildings going. I mean, thousand five, our youngest building is twenty, nineteen years old. I mean, we have to be responsible and do something. That don't mean we spend ninety million or eighty million, but we have to have a plan of what we're gonna spend money on and the severity of the need.
Well, the bonds were a, a good thing, but since it happened the way it happened, it just didn't look right and then we all just lost confidence and trust. But you could revisit that and see, you know. Just because of how it happened and what happened, we lost trust in it, we lost trust at that time.
Well, I think there's a difference between bonds for whatever we might happen to need and bonds for these very specific items that we know we need to do.
Yeah, we're still in that market, right, Dr. Hill?
Yes.
That has not increased interest, everything's still.
If I can, so whenever the conversation is open, we, we can talk.
All right.
I'd like to hear it.
All right, personal. Good evening, board.
Hi, good evening.
I'm gonna, uh, if you don't mind, uh, I'm gonna skip around here a little bit, uh, a lot of the information on these slides, LT covered, I believe you have this presentation in your board packet, so you can always review it in more detail if you'd like. A lot of this is just, um, summarizing, uh, specific items that were completed that were in the original F M P. Uh, to look at least a little bit familiar for you, so. So I'm gonna go ahead and kind of sail through this section real quick and get to the, excuse me, the, the refresh. So, um, yeah, as was kind of mentioned before, this was always conceived as a ten-year facility master plan. And we've completed a lot of work and made a lot of improvement, uh, across all three facilities, uh, based on the original guiding principles of that F M P. Now we're in about year five-ish of that, uh, of that master plan. It's a good time, since we've completed a lot of work, to take a little step back and see how those original projects that were envisioned for the latter phases of the F M P, uh, still apply to current thinking. Obviously, we've gone through the pandemic and there's been, uh, some administration turnover, and so there are different, uh, ideas and thoughts as to what should be the next group of projects that the district should undertake. And so, right now, uh, we're kind of in this plan refresh, uh, period where, you know, there can be some, uh, uh, feedback from stakeholders, as well as a repriorization. And so what, uh, personal was asked to do was meet with each school's, uh, administration to go through some of the projects that were included in the original F M P. So pretty much every project that you see here, uh, that we will, we will be presenting was included in the original F M P, but identified for a later phase of work. And so, uh, as we had the discussion, we presented, you know, the original F M P projects, said, what on here no longer applies, what is not on here that should be considered? And, you know, what on here should be revisioned, if there's, you know, something, you know, we want to do this, but should we, we should still do it, but do it in a slightly different way. And so, uh, from the administration, as well as for the grades need for those. Themes that we heard was security projects, uh, like I said, there were a few key ones that, uh, really not simple one-off projects, a lot of shop into the buildings, we've demolished that. For Proviso East was modernizing the, uh, fieldhouse, uh, and possibly renovating, uh, renovating the pool. Uh, this would include new competition gym, running track, weight equipment training area, um, P E locker rooms. Um, it could either be conceived as a renovation in addition to the existing facility, a demolition of the existing, existing facility and construction of the new one. Um, and that's something that would be studied, you know, when the board or if the board decides to proceed with this project. Uh, corresponding to that was just an option, again, this was, uh, conceived as part of the original F M P, was a new competition pool. And this is something that would be, you know, considered a joint project to the fieldhouse, uh, fieldhouse, uh, renovations or addition. Uh, continuing on, the other, uh, item that was considered to be a very high priority was, uh, the creation of secure entry, uh, secure entries at Proviso East. Uh, right now, there are simply a single set of doors to enter into the building, at which point a visitor has full access to it. Um, that, that's, uh, uh, the norm we see for most high schools nowadays is, uh, a, a secure entry vestibule, so, uh, visitors to the building can be screened in a little bit more rigorous manner. Um, and so there have been some schematic plans developed on that, just developed at a high concept level, what a secure entry would look at. I do wanna say, uh, one quick item about the numbers you see here, uh, we've included them for order of magnitude. These were concept estimates prepared by Del Bayne, uh, however, they were prepared, uh, at the spring of last year. So there is some escalation needed, but should still give you an idea about, you know, where some of these projects would land, uh, for planning purposes. Uh, continuing on for Proviso East, uh, one thing that we are very well aware of is the extent of galvanized piping, uh, that's in the facility that will continue to deteriorate. And so this project, uh, is a replacement of the galvanized piping with new copper piping. And in correlation with that would be renovations to the, uh, toilet rooms, which would bring them up to new. Uh, similarly, the freight elevator, uh, in, uh, at Proviso East, uh, has currently been, uh, a bit of a maintenance task regularly. Uh, and so, uh, this project would replace that freight elevator in the existing shaft. Additionally, Proviso East doesn't have a true passenger elevator, um, which means, uh, it's a little bit difficult to use a freight elevator, freight elevator, uh, for, uh, accessibility, uh, purposes. And so, uh, there would be the, uh, concept to provide new passenger elevator in a new shaft at Proviso East. Couple other projects that, you know, were still considered in the top tier, there were probably for each facility about thirty projects or so that were discussed. And these were the ones that just rose to what was considered the top tier. So rounding out the, uh, remaining, uh, items of the top tier, uh, would be tennis court renovations and tennis courts are, are, uh, deteriorating, um, and could use, uh, uh, a refresh, uh, as well as the surgery, uh, renovations. Uh, there's been some work done in the cafeteria in conjunction with the HVAC and lighting replacement, uh, but on, uh, on balance, surgeries themselves, uh, are kind of a, uh, nineteen-tens, nineteen-ten, nineteen-twenty style operation where you enter into separate rooms and, um, that would, uh, involve renovating those to bring them to more modern standards. So any questions on Proviso East before I move to West? Okay, continuing on, uh, again, some of the themes that were brought up at Proviso West, again, security, uh, was considered to be a, uh, uh, a predominant theme, uh, expanding on the career technical education offerings at Proviso West, uh, modernizing age academic spaces, uh, similar to Proviso East, renovating aging, uh, plumbing infrastructure, as well as stadium upgrades to bring Proviso, uh, West on equity with, uh, what Proviso East received as part of the first phase of the F M P. So, uh, again, rising to the top of the list, uh, was, uh, security and the secure entry and welcoming center. Um, this is something that was thought to be a really, uh, uh, specific need as visitors and parents come to Proviso West and, uh, perhaps need, uh, additional assistance. There's no, uh, real set aside place where parents can come and discuss with, uh, school administrators and school staff uh, for the needs that, uh, they need for their students, uh, as well as, uh, eliminating the single door access uh, to the facility and going to a more typical airlock, uh, uh, entry sequence, providing, uh, a more secure, uh, entry procedure. Uh, the second item, uh, was considered, uh, a continued expansion of the C T E wing. Uh, we had a very successful project in the advanced manufacturing facility, um, and, uh, as part of the original F M P, it was always considered that the C T E programs would be a, a, a specific focus on that. Um, there are facilities at West, for example, the culinary arts program at West is a bit shoehorned into a very small space, um, with, uh, uh, aging equipment and, uh, uh, appliances. There's also the thought of expanding the advanced manufacturing to include a welding lab, uh, program. And so this pro, uh, project would really collect all the C T E functions into a specific area and create, uh, a C T E wing, um, that would really allow Proviso West to increase its, uh, increase or modernize its offerings of C T E programs. Uh, item number three here, uh, does require some scope development, this was a new item, uh, that was brought up, uh, in our discussions. It, you know, the Proviso West, uh, academic wing is a nineteen-fifties wing with nineteen-fifties style classrooms. It's very specific, uh, to that type of curriculum, uh, concept. Uh, and so the thought here is that, uh, we could look at the academic wing and see how we can start to break down the rigidity of these nineteen-fifties classrooms to allow for more, uh, inquiry-based, uh, uh, learning, to allow for more, uh, collaborative learning, uh, spaces, uh, instead of being kind of very strict, uh, uh, walled off lecture format style spaces. And so like I said, because this was a new one, uh, we don't have a full scope developed for it or a budget estimate. This would be something that, again, if the board decides that this is a priority, we could, uh, proceed with and develop, uh, in more specificity. Uh, one that is developed in specificity is toilet rooms and plumbing. And similar to Proviso East, there's an extensive amount of galvanized piping, um, and Proviso West has had, uh, issues with, uh, the serviceability of its plumbing system in terms of getting hot water everywhere. So this would replace the galvanized piping with new copper piping, uh, as well as renovate toilet rooms to new, uh, accessibility standards. LT has mentioned, uh, the roofs, uh, over a, a number of the spaces at Proviso West. Uh, the, the whole facility, although a great deal of facility currently has a secondary roof on it and kind of standing scene metal roof that was built over a previous roof, so there's two roofs, uh, one concealed. Uh, this project would, uh, tear off both roofs and come back with a new, modern, uh, single ply membrane roofing system. Uh, in, uh, six, uh, W six, uh, again, we mentioned bringing the Proviso West, uh, facility right to Proviso East. Uh, this is a, a project that can really, you know, be done in, you know, in parts or specific parts can be done. Uh, the grant, existing grandstand at Proviso West currently does not have any accessible seating or toilet rooms, um, and is, is somewhat, uh, the support space, support spaces are undersized for the, uh, uh, population it serves. So this would, uh, provide a new concession building and home and visitor grandstand, uh, as well as provide new artificial turf field. Uh, item seven is a more maintenance-focused item. Uh, the, there's a fire watering that runs across the property at Proviso West and it is aged and deteriorating and the district is currently spending, uh, uh, not insignificant, not insignificant amount of sum of money every year to repair and keep serviceable. Uh, this project would be to replace, uh, several hundred feet of that, uh, so that way, uh, there were no longer any to continue to repair and deteriorate pipe. Uh, and then lastly, uh, this is just an extension of the reconstruct, uh, parking lot reconstruction to the south parking lot. I wanna be very specific about this, this would be more or less grinding down the, or, uh, removing the, uh, existing paving and replacing the paving, there would be no stormwater management associated with this. If we, uh, uh, disturb more than a half acre, uh, then N W R D stormwater management policies would apply. So this really is just a, a reconstruction of a lot in place. Any questions on Proviso West before I go to P M S A? Okay, uh, P M S A, again, the themes that arose to the top here were, uh, again, security, uh, with the secure entries on par with the other two facilities, uh, physical education, uh, increasing the classroom quantity to accommodate more students, uh, similarly floor plan optimization, uh, as well as HVAC renovations, uh, kind of along lines of what LT mentioned here regarding building controls. Um, and so, uh, one of the things that was really a keystone of the, uh, latter phases of the F, the original F M P in twenty eighteen was the creation of a wellness or physical education center for P M S A. Um, as you know, P M S A doesn't really have physical education facilities. That was left open when we did the parking lot reconstruction. This would include, you know, running tracks, uh, weight room, nurses' office, locker rooms, toilet rooms, multipurpose room, and really serve those needs. Now, these two projects at P M S A, because they would be taking functions out of the existing building and putting it into a new addition as a corollary project, which is, uh, item one B here, of creating new classrooms and support spaces. So if that addition were to go forward, uh, the space that would be vacated in the existing building could be renovated and increase the classroom count, uh, in the P M S A, uh, facility. So these can almost be viewed as a part one of a project and part two of a project. Um, similarly, uh, as envisioned in the twenty eighteen F M P, uh, the performing arts, uh, addition, this would be a continuation of the addition, uh, for the physical education, uh, center and provide, uh, performing arts center, theater rehearsal spaces. Uh, as with the other two facilities, a secure entry, uh, was considered to be a, a top priority. Uh, as you see, when you enter in the building here, uh, like I said, you go through one set of doors here at the security desk, but then there's no other set of doors that, uh, allows for additional screening, uh, before entering a facility. Uh, another top priority item, as LT has mentioned, uh, replacing the existing HVAC controls and rebalancing the entire HVAC system. Uh, if you've ever been in, entering this facility and tried to open the door and, uh, would be the creation of a robotics lab. Uh, this was the idea that, you know, Proviso East and Proviso West each have kind of their identities around a very, uh, around a variety of programs and athletics. And for P M S A, a lot of their identities, they have a very successful, very popular robotic, uh, robotics lab. And so there's a thought of creating a dedicated robotics lab space, especially one in a public-facing area where this can really be celebrated. This is one of those projects that if the athletic facility were to be, be constructed and there are spaces vacated in the existing building, this could be a nice secondary project that would partner well with that. And that kind of wraps up what were considered to be all the high priority needs, uh, for P M S A. Again, like I said, pretty much every single one of you, um, and there's now, you know, the. Was completed, this has changed, what needs to happen?
Good evening, I'm gonna be going over the Del Bayne items for tonight. I'm gonna briefly highlight on some construction quality steps, procedures, um, and again, briefly go over some punch lists, financial spend debate, uh, on the F M P. First question came up relative to quality instruction, uh, highlights some items that we utilize on our projects, specifically here to address and ensure that the finished product is a high quality. Uh, this includes mockups, benchmarks, uh, we complete daily H O meetings with the trade foreman. Uh, we do complete first delivery of material inspections, uh, and there's a sample of, an example of one of those inspections in your packet, uh, as well as a closure inspection, which is completed for, before we actually close walls or seal, it's, it's generated at the end of the project. That we utilize on our projects. This should be example of a closure inspection that's completed either in wall or above ceiling with all the impacting, the number of punch list meeting indicator, cause, causal list. It's at the very end of the job. We've got some random items here and there that haven't been completed yet that are going to get wrapped up before the first day of school, and it gets added to that punch list. And you can see as a recap on the 2023 work at Proviso East and Proviso West, that schedule was ahead of my way though, the biggest causal effect of punch list on the project. Looking on the discipline side, I'm going to just kind of go over this item here. Again, I've got actual recaps for each summer that we've been here for all the projects. But the leading indicator we identified here is the different disciplines that have punch list is really predicated on the work. For instance, here at PMSA 2020, the work that we did here was mostly site work. So it's expected that your site work punch list is going to be a larger quantity of discipline or punch list versus maybe carpentry or mechanical. Moving forward on to the mechanical upgrades that have been completed the last three summers, it's a different story. You're not going to have the site work. You are going to have mechanical contractors, electrical contractors, and carpentry contractors that are going to make up the highest amount of punch list. And again, these are identified, these are actually broken up. I don't think we necessarily need to go project by project, but you can kind of see the recaps that we did provide for you relative to the different disciplines. Proviso West door hinge concern. So the district came to request or had a concern relative to some recently installed door hinges that were, appeared to be failing. These are some door hinges that were identified on the third floor of Proviso West. The door. So we went ahead and we reviewed the condition, what we identified and we noted based on some of the paint scuffing that was shown on the frame. It appears the hole opened, it just kind of hold those doors open. And what's happening is it has that racking effect on the hinges, causes those hinges to start pulling away. There's actually a picture of a condition where somebody had actually, you know, put in a wood doorstop and a hinge, or I'm sorry, in a door when I was walking the space reviewing these conditions. Before I get onto the budget side, did anybody have any questions, comments relative to the quality punch list? So this here shows a breakdown. This is what's been committed to date. So it's a hundred twenty-nine point nine million dollars that was committed. We have billed to date, basically through January 2024, a hundred ten point four million. You can see in here on the pie chart, the breakout based on sequence of work. I will go over those here. First one, Phase One Sequence One, which is the 2020 work. That was roughly thirteen percent of the FMP. That included the parking lot, HLS, and culinary arts work over Proviso East. It included, then it included the parking lot here. The original contract value was sixteen point and sixteen point one, showing, moving on to Phase One Sequence Two Point One, which also occurred 2020 into the 2021 year. This was the new auto shop at Proviso East, and it also included the parking lot. Our contract amount was three point two million. Phase One Sequence Two Point Two, this was the first of the FMP. This included level two ceiling and light replacement, as well as level two mechanical upgrades at Proviso East. Included the boilerhouse for the level three academic wing. It included the level three B wing curtain wall replacement, as well as the upgrades in the boilerhouse to accommodate the mechanical upgrades. This FMP or this original contracted values were thirty fifty-two thousand dollars. Moving on to Phase One Sequence Three, this was work that occurred 2022 as well as 2023, a seven percent of the FMP. That's the casework. So the casework was pre-purchased through this sequence of work. Proviso West, it included the auto shop tunnel and sidewalk replacement, tunnel lid, I'm sorry, and sidewalk replacement. It included the concrete sunshade repairs on all the academic wing exterior facades. And then lastly, was the cafeteria mechanical upgrades. We are at eight point three million final, showing a return of, so I'm just identifying that delta as an estimated cost based on where we're at. And three, this work at Proviso East included level one north mechanical upgrades, as well as level one north ceiling lighting replacement, B wing south wall curtain wall replacement, and then the staff parking lot replacement, which was the north into the east parking lot at West. Contracts at the time of bid came in at nineteen point two million. We're currently slightly under that, and there's a couple that West completes at Proviso East, level zero and level one ceiling lighting, south B wing curtain wall replacement. And then lastly, the level one B wing bio labs upgrades. These bids came in at the time of thirty-eight million. I've got T V D for all this because obviously we are still a little more than halfway completed at East, and we're finalizing the contracts at West. So once I get that data and it'll be provided to see what the delta looks like. And again, this was actually, I think, the largest that we had at twenty-nine percent of that FMP. Also had Phase One Access Controls, which was completed over 2022, 2023. This was just one percent of the FMP. This was putting in the new carb reader systems, as well as some new electric strikes. The original numbers for this was one point seven million, came in around one point six. So we had a savings in the district of roughly eighty-six thousand dollars for this contract. Phase Two Access, excuse me, Phase Two Access Controls, this was 2023, 2024. Again, this is roughly one percent of the FMP. This was finalizing the access controls components relative to having some radio transmitters put in. We also included, there was some field house curtain wall replacement over at East and a door storefront that got replaced at East Door Twenty. Other values, when these came in a bid was one point nine million. This work is currently ongoing, so I don't have a final order delta available to present to you at this time. And the last item on here is the security camera upgrades and masonry. Proviso East Field House Masonry work, which is happening this year. This is roughly four percent of the FMP. It includes a complete camera and camera system upgrades at all three schools, as well as replacing the brick masonry at the field house entrance to the, to the field house at Proviso East. These numbers came in at five point seven million. As this work is ongoing, again, I do not have a final order delta. And the last thing I want to identify, want to show, because obviously the equity ability between schools is obviously important. So you can kind of see with the spending on that original FMP that the breakout right now relative to East, Proviso West, and PMSA is according to this, with obviously East having the largest impact to date and West and PMSA behind that. So with that, does anybody have any questions?
Quick question, Sam. The punch list, I'm trying to get my head around the punch list. So you guys have walkthroughs, you complete the projects. It's, am I understanding the punch list is just, because it should, we should not, in a perfect world, need a punch list, right? If the work's done, there's a walkthrough and everything should be.
There's, there's, you're always going to have a punch list of some kind.
In a perfect world.
In absolutely perfect world.
No punch list. Okay, so now what we're looking at with the punch list is possible deficiencies that we maybe could have caught before it was completed? Have we implemented anything to do a walkthrough to make sure that we don't have to? Because my understanding of a punch list is we've got to go through several phases in order to get that completed again, which might include even bringing those people back out to do it after they're gone. So are we doing anything? I'm just asking, as we get towards the ends of some of these projects and I see this punch list stuff, what are we putting in place to ensure that that, because we've got scheduling, we've got classes, we've got to be interrupting schedules and stuff, again, to go back and redo work that we find that was deficiency in the first place? Can we do that better by doing these walkthroughs before everyone's gone, say a week or two prior to? And then we go through and say, okay, listen, look at this, look at this, look at this, look at this, even invite the community or members of the board to go through and look before everybody packs up their stuff and goes home and then you've got to call them all back again?
Yeah, so the way the punch list plays out, so and you can see on here the reason schedule is such an important element, we have something called the rolling completion list. So if you're to go through our punch list, most of the punch list, a lot of the items are, there's a ceiling tile missing, or the lights in this classroom aren't going on, random things because of the fact of the original punch list walkthrough are curbed because we have to get that first punch list done before you guys are in school. So we still have another week, week and a half left in the project. So a big chunk of that is going to be completed.
Okay, great.
And there are items here and there, you know, that things happen. Unfortunately, it's, it's the nature of the industry where we got items here and there that may extend out. The one thing you can understand is that we do not release payment on a contractor. So if there is a contractor, you know, their payments aren't being, their final payments not being released until all the punch list is closed out, that's in their book, so.
Well, you answered it. Thank you. The majority of that is really already taken care of in what I said already, so that was my concern.
Yeah, right. I asked for this just because sometimes a lot of companies lose money on the punch list because, and it's a digital, we lose money as well. So what happens exactly what you say, they go through the, they do a construction and they do a punch list and they say, oh, we'll come back here and they don't come back later.
Right.
So I told your bank, okay, so who's paying for that? But I think your bank has something in place where if they don't come back, your bank pays for that.
Gotcha.
Is that correct? Am I saying that correct?
Well, it, I mean. More, we typically don't release payments of the contractor, there's punch list items open.
I mean, we're a few ten percent.
We keep, well, now it's five percent, but yes, so.
But that could go on for months, even years, right?
We hope not, but usually five percent's a pretty showing virgin for people to get out and get their work done.
Yeah, punch list is part of the construction class.
All right, thank you.
Correct. Unless there are any additional questions, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Yeah, please. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to just opening up my slides right here. Thank you so much. So I wanted to draw everyone's attention to a few things that Ms. Barbehan had pointed out. The Forest Park Public Library this Thursday has a college as possible seminar. This is free for anyone who wants to attend. It's about starting to plan for college, how to lay the groundwork for what you expect, tips and tools for students and parents to plan and pay for college. So if anyone has any questions or they're examining this as a possible option, this is a really good resource. Also, as Coach Forside had pointed out, mental health is always a concern with our students and our staff and our community, really. And we've talked about this before. Ms. Sixon has presented on this. We've brought up several resources for help, and this is another resources for help. This is a group called Why Not Family? And they provide a variety of services for children and parents, family therapy, individual therapy, support services, anger management, outpatient therapy. This is just another resource. I know in the past we've brought up resources from River Edge Hospital, we've brought up resources from NAMI, which is the National Association of Mental Illness, and their living room program that they have in Broadview, which is completely free and open to the public. And also for any students or parents or families who are struggling, I do want to point out that on the back of every student's ID, there's also information about where to turn to for help. So we have a variety of ways to contact a crisis lifeline, either by phone or text or email. There are all these resources and they're right on the back of each student's ID. So please take advantage of these if you need them. Next, I wanted to point out that our Saturday School is going on in Proviso West. If you have any questions, we have our contacts here. Ms. Gillespie and Ms. Levasor are coordinating this. This is a way that you can make up tests, quizzes, you can do all sorts of things on the Saturday School. So if this is something that you need or your student needs, please take advantage of this resource. They have this twice a month, and it's a really valuable tool for anyone who might need it. And then also I wanted to touch just for a moment on our upcoming superintendent search. We are having a virtual staff and teachers focus group on February twentieth with H Y A. We are having a student focus group that's going to be in person on February twenty-first. We're having an in-person community forum on February twenty-first and a virtual community forum on February twenty-second. Invitations for those community forums are going to be going out shortly. So definitely look for those in your email and text. Something I forgot to do a graphic on is that our Five Essentials survey is out. Everyone should have gotten a text the other day about our Five Essentials survey, and we really want everyone to fill those out. Also, in everyone's mail, hopefully you got the Proviso Positives. That newsletter went out to everyone in Proviso Township, and it talked about the great things that we've really accomplished and the things that we want our students and families to take advantage of. So this year, we have some partnerships with, or we have a partnership with community, sorry, Triton College, to offer a bunch of different programs. Some of these we've had in place, some of these are new for this year, and some of these we're building on for next year. But I think we saw when we had our student recognition, how incredibly transformative these programs can be. We do have openings in each of these programs, so we do want to make sure that students are asking about these and counselors are reaching out and our college and career counselors are reaching out. We want students to take advantage of these. These are paid programs that this school covers the cost of, right? Get a jump start on your career, get a jump start on your college career by taking advantage of these. You know, we, you know, Zion and Peace and Princess Maya over here that I, you know, just hearing those stories was really incredible, you know, what they're doing and the bright futures they have in front of them, you know? And we want that for all of our students. So if our programs with Triton College interest you, please, please, please find out more information and sign up. We do have our AP, IB, and honors courses at all preschools. We have put in place our sheltered instruction observation protocol training. This is for our teachers of our English language learners. This focuses on best practices to support our growing population, our multi-language learner population, which we also discussed this evening. And that's really important to develop the structures and the supports needed for that population and close the achievement gaps. Mr. Ashok did a wonderful job explaining the STAR program and how we are seeing growth in math and reading across the district, which is really fantastic. Thank you so much for that presentation. This year, we've also started doing the weekly newsletters from each school. Principals are putting out really valuable information every single week. This is information about tutoring programs. This is information about athletic events. This is information about different clubs you can join. Excuse me. Excuse me. This is great information that is right there, and it's really important as parents to be looking at these things as they're coming out from our schools. There was a question someone posed to me the other night. Parents were having trouble, their student was having a really hard time in math, he was so, just so down about it. He was really, you know, made comments, I don't want to be in school. What resources do we have? Well, we have resources, right? We have paper, we have all kinds of supports, and those are listed in every newsletter. So please, please, please take a look at those that are going out and letting our students and families know what is available to them. So in addition to the school newsletters, kind of opening up another window to our district and our schools, we've also reinstated a lot of the committees this year. and our schools, we've also reinstated a lot of the committees this year, and the committees are open to the public, and they're a great way to get involved with the school and also have a window into what's going on, you know, if you're watching the facilities committee or the finance committee or joining the policy committee or the parent and family community engagement committee. These are all ways to see what's going on in our schools, you know, and you can find a way to get involved or just know how your tax dollars are being spent. That's really important. We've also reintroduced college and career counselors at each school this year, which has been a tremendous help for our students, and they have a lot of resources for our kids, so we definitely want kids to be taking advantage and seeing their college and career counselors at each school. I talked about paper, the online tutoring service. We have a tremendous amount of supports available for our kids. They are there, and we're going to continue to publicize these things. They're on our website, they are in the newsletters, they're on the different school sites that our kids have access to. So please make sure if your children need help, that they're using these resources. I want to thank especially Dr. Watson Hill this year. I know you put a tremendous amount of work into the finance office, making sure that we have the necessary systems in place to make sure that we are operating in the best way possible, and I know you put a ton of work into it, and I really want to thank you for that. I also want to thank Dr. Brandon, who's done an incredible amount of work with our CTE program and making sure that we have those relationships and finding those dollars to get even more support from Triton and the state. So thank you for the efforts that you are putting in. And then we've also reinvigorated our relationships with our foundation school superintendents. A few meetings ago, we approved that school calendar that's now in sync with our foundation schools so that parents don't have to worry about what to do with the younger kids when they don't have school, right? When you have children across a few different districts, as we do here, that's important. It really is helpful to families, and I think that's really an important component of making us truly one Proviso. So I do want to thank everyone who's had a part in that. Thank you so much to Christie and Noemi for making that flyer. There is a longer version in English and Spanish on our website, so if you want to know the positive things that are happening in our district, I really do urge you to take a look because there's a lot of good things happening here, and thank you for helping us to publicize those things. Again, we do have our superintendent search coming up. In that Proviso Positives that was sent throughout Proviso Township, there is a QR code and a website where you can go and you can participate in the superintendent search by filling out a survey. When I reached out to my fellow board members, nearly everyone suggested that they wanted that larger township involvement, so this was one way we could get it on everyone's doorstep in English and Spanish to make sure that we could encourage as much participation as possible. And again, we will have that invitation going out for those community forums, both the in-person and the virtual ones coming up, so please look for those. At this time, I would like to invite my committee chairs to let us know when your next meetings are coming up and if there's anything you'd like to share about your committee. Can we start with you, Ms. Hickson?
I don't have anything planned for next month, but it will be in April, will be mine. Now, I actually have the date, but I don't have anything planned for March.
Okay.
Yes, the facilities committee is the first Tuesday of every month. We were having it in March, but since we're kind of gearing down our projects, we're going to have it every two months, so our next meeting will be till April 9th. I'm sorry, April 2nd, April 9th, I mean, yes, April 2nd.
The parent and family community engagement committee will not meet in February, we will resume in March.
So the finance committee is actually tomorrow, I noticed, and I say it, it'll be brief, but thank you, Dr. Hill, for being flexible, and we have special guests to talk about drivers at behind the wheel, and we will be talking about the holiday tournament at Proviso West, you know, the finances behind it and all the revenue that was generated, so more to come on that.
Excellent, thank you so much. Again, these committee meetings are open to the public, we encourage you to join, we put the dates on our website, as well as they go out in the different principal newsletters that go out each week, and thank you for helping us get that word out. And that concludes the president's report. Thank you. At this time, we are going to head right into our agenda. Okay, at this time, make sure I'm on the right page. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the January 9th, 2024 board meeting?
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Belderos?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the February 13th, 2024 bills list as presented?
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Belderos?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the February 13th, 2024 past due bills to be paid as presented?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
This is for fourteen?
Yes.
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Belderos?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Motion carried. May I have a motion to adopt press policy 110 and 111, proposed revisions to policies 2100, 2105, 2110, 2210, 2265, 4140, 4165, 520, 590, 5120, 5125, 5150, 5260, 5280, 5320, 620, 665, 650, 6135, 6250, 6255, 6260, 6340, 750, 7100, 7180, 7250, 7340, 820, as presented at the policy committee meetings.
Madam President, just one, I'm sorry, one adjustment to that. Six fifty, which is the wellness policy, never made its way into the boards.
Oh, no, okay.
Yeah, so that, just that one needs to be.
Okay, so all of those that I just said?
Minus.
Minus.
Six fifty?
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna, let me write that down real quick. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve, a motion to adopt press policy 110 and 111, proposed provisions to all the policies I mentioned, minus six fifty. So move. Thank you. Any discussion?
Discussion. I think we need to pay attention to your complaint manager and your complaint person. Adala doesn't want to work here, and I don't know if Dr. Diana Thomas would give your report for an investigation.
At the rule, we're going to leave that blind. One second. That's supposed to be that blind.
Well, I think you have to have.
One more second. I know we're supposed to, but we had to discuss that. Hold on a second. Let me get that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I got.
Here.
The non- discrimination coordinator.
I'm sorry.
And complaint manager. We have to put in someone's name there.
Okay.
Okay. And it's usually the person in human resources that would be put in there.
So, so those policies are designed that the name can be updated without board action?
Exactly.
So if, if there's no change to the title of the individual who's serving in that role, then, for example, Mr. Adala can be replaced with Mr. Pahom, and the board doesn't need to take action on that. Just a good replacement.
Good to know, thank you. Okay, so we can go ahead and vote. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Belderos?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agreement of young Ateya and Associates for the placement of Dr. Constance Collins and Dr. Perry Fugarero to serve as co-acting interim superintendents during the absence of Dr. Bessie Kerbalis? So, second, discussion?
Yeah.
Can we table?
Yeah, because I, I could be giving you the look to someone on the inside.
Table a special meeting for this, I mean.
Can we do a special meeting of?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, please. I think that'll save the district a lot of money and the taxpayers will be happy.
There could be a vote to table or if, or president wants to just remove it from the agenda, either way you accomplish the same goal.
Okay, so, all right, then I'll remove it from the agenda? If that's, yeah, the, what we would like to do? Okay, in that case, can we all get out our calendars? Tell me who is free on Tuesday, February 20th at 7:00 PM?
I know.
No?
I know.
Okay.
Tuesday.
School is out on the 19th, so we don't want to have the 19th. What about Wednesday, the 21st at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
Is that?
That's fine. That's fine, we'll move that.
Okay, Ms. Hickson, Harry, Ms. Barban, Mr. Belderos? Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Belderos?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Motion carried. May I have a motion to authorize the appointments, resignations, terminations, and stipends awards as support in the February 13th, 2024 personnel report as presented? So move. Second, discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
I don't know.
What?
The 21st.
The 21st, we may have a call on the 23rd.
Wait, that's, okay.
6:00 PM.
And where's that at though? What room is that in?
Is that here?
It would be here.
It's at East.
Oh, it is at East? So we're good, thank you. All right, um, did Ms. Patterson say yesterday?
Uh, I don't know. Did you say seven?
I did, 7:00 PM, yes. Mr. Alexander?
I'm not sure, but should we guys have a poll?
Thank you, all right. In that case, Mr. Bryce, if you could send a motion, a special meeting on Wednesday, February 21st at 7:00 PM to discuss the interim superintendent situation?
Yes.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the board's uniform grievance complaint decision concerning the interim superintendent, which adopts the investigator's findings and direct constituents to involve parties as presented and discussed in post-session? So move. Second. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Nay.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Nay.
Mr. Belderos?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Motion carried. May I have a motion to authorize the appointments, resignations, terminations, and stipends awards as support in the February 13th, 2024 personnel report as presented? I'm still moving, sorry. Thank you. Second, any discussion?
Discussion. So let me just ask a question. For the administrative assistants, and I know this is women's work. Why is there a need to fill those positions? I, I want you to tell me that, because they are not allocated. But you have, and I heard Ms. Hickson say this over and over, you have an abundance of administrative assistants, and my mind serves me correctly, I remember when this kind of started some years ago, prior to the board, when the union made changes, they started getting a few more administrative assistants, Wes, and then Wes started putting in, you have all of these administrative assistants. I don't see. I, I would like to see, to, and I know that it's a shortage, I do, I believe me, I know that it is, but we have, Proviso West had about 150 kids that had hold on your schedule. Nobody talks about that. It was a big deal last year. Maybe got about 19 now. And the problem with it is we get so many teachers taking on six assignments, you don't have teachers, and now you have students, as that young man stood there and said, I'm done after one class, but you have seniors that are placed in these classes that are actually holding a seat that maybe a sophomore junior could use, but because it's overfilled with seniors, you know, it's, it's those type of things that I would like to see the, the money go towards, and, and afford those seniors that would like to use senior privilege and opportunity to go home, because you should have students sitting in this office, can't sit in this office because they have nowhere to go, they don't have a class before the So I would kind of like to see, and I understand about the application very much aware how that operates, but we have students without classes, we have students that are coming and stay all day long for one class. That young man appeared to say, hey, I can go and work, I can get ready for college. And we do have senior privileges, so the point that I'm making is all the administrative assistants that we are hiring is just, is too much.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
A quick discussion. To, to Adala's point, and I'm not sure if these are necessities or whatever, but I, I want to read an email real quick that's pertinent to this action item that I received, and I'm not going to name the teacher that sent it to me, and I'm not going to name the administrator that they were referring to, but it goes directly to what we're discussing now and what was discussed by the, by the student. Says counselors have explained to me that there are not enough electives available for each semester, and they are being restricted to remove seniors from classes per the current superintendent. Last year in the second semester, there were accommodations made for the late arrival and early dismissal for seniors due to lack of space in classrooms and sections of classes. The solution will resolve, this solution will resolve any problems. I continue to stress throughout this semester, there are not enough sections of civics for seniors and sophomores to take it, to take, but it seems to fall on deaf ears. I brought it directly to blah, 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 my concerns, she said she will investigate it. I say this to say that as we're allocating administrators and things to different positions, if we're not being able to build these things, and I think what's more important is that we allocate those things to making sure that we can build these classes or let these students go home. If we don't need the administrators and they're not doing or performing something, then let's just move them around. I'm just really concerned that we not get too far in the woods, I mean, because we're bringing in another superintendent, and we're really creating things from a more like novice position right now, just trying to sustain. I think if we could just keep things on track and keep them moving without making too many major decisions, because we don't want to hire things, and then he comes in or she comes in and says, well, I want to do this or that, and we, him and she were hamstrung there coming into the district, so that's all.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I just have one matter present under C12, all these people were offered positions and then they all declined them. Is that, is that what I'm reading? Okay, that's it.
Yes, these are, these are individuals who originally accepted the position and then subsequently declined afterwards, yes.
So because they voted once, for them, we have to now vote?
That's right, it's just a matter of repaying and ensure that it's, that it's, that we have transparency in terms of our.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Nay.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Belderos?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we, on the agenda, we already discussed the bilingual and English learner support services. This was an information item, but it will come back as an action item at the last meeting in February. Ms. Barban, could you please read the FOIA report and to record? Proviso Township High School's District 29 received four FOIA requests since the last regular meeting of the Board of Education. On January 17th, 2024, the name and email address of any certified staff who were retiring this year, the request status was granted. On January 22nd, 2024, communications and records pertaining to the discipline and
and dismissal of a specific stated district employee, request status in process. January 25th, 2024, copies of all contracts and change orders entered into between Proviso Township High School District 209 and Leger Architects, Inc. from January 1st, 2007 through December 31st, 2017, request status in process. And the final one was January 26th, 2024, directory information of honor roll students from the high schools graduating classes of 2027, 2026, and 2025, request status denied.
I have a question for the attorney. It was a big deal about who filed for FOIA. And now I see all of a sudden, it's no longer a big deal with, I see on the bottom where you said to put the names of the person that's inquiring about FOIA.
So, we were asked in the district, the history of the district. And it's the history of the district that I don't think we appreciated when we got that question. We were asked whether the names have to be included, and the answer is no. The, the school code just requires that there be a FOIA report concerning the FOIA that have been submitted since the last board meeting. It doesn't expressly require the names are not. Some districts might report the names, others don't. Some districts don't report the details of the requests that were just read. The school code doesn't establish what needs to be in the report.
Or the transparency. That's why I'm.
No, sure. Some people would argue that disclosing the names would chill people's interest in submitting FOIA requests at the beginning. So if, if it's this district's practice that can report those names.
Seven years we've lived.
Don't get your typical body.
It's transparency.
Understood. If it's this district's practice to report the names, then we should stick with that. Mr. Bryce, I apologize, because I really appreciated that. That, that's how it always been done.
Okay, at this time, I have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
And I. Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Motion carried. Your adjourn at? 10:23. 10:23. Thank you. I will see, we'll see everybody here next Wednesday. Thank you so much.